Good morning.
Good morning.
In past procedures, each item, excuse me, each item that was brought up on the agenda would be addressed and you could have public commentary to them as the items were brought up. But I've noticed in the last meetings, both commission meetings and probably what this is going to be, is we now have a new chain of command and we should have new rules and regulations and they should be set forth by the chairman of the meeting. Are we going to be able to citizens address each issue or is that going to be forgotten? Are we only going to be addressed, public commentary at the beginning of the meeting? Can we say anything during a meeting when you address an agenda meeting, agenda item? That is my question for this morning as we go into a new era of control of the commissioners. I'd like to know an answer.
Yeah, and I think nothing really would have changed last minute. I know we had a couple of our regular commission meeting, we had two first readings of ordinances which didn't require action. That's probably why there's no commentary on that. But any voting item, we would ask for a public comment at the item. So today, for instance, if there's any action items during new business, after there's a motion and discussion, there would be opportunity for public comment.
After every agenda item?
If it's an action item.
Except for the first readings.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, you don't really call for it on ministerial items like approving the minutes and things like that, but action items you, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public commentary? If not, we'll move on to our CRA Director's Report.
Good morning Chairman Nelson, Commissioners, this is Gainer. I did want to point out, I do want to talk about three items that we recently, that I recently worked on. And first of all, the wave finding sign project. This is a project that was significantly discussed with this board, whether or not this project should be implemented. And I did want to point out that we finally completed this wave finding sign project. We spent over $60,000 on it on about 12 signs that were installed along Highway 77 and Highway 390. And I did want to point out that this project is now complete. This was one of the signature projects the CRA had on their list this fiscal year. Also, we also addressed this during the city commission meeting. We submitted some grant applications for a CDBG DR disaster recovery grant and also an CDBG HRP hometown revitalization grant. I did want to bring this to the board's attention because those grants will have a significant positive impact to the CRA. The CDBG DR grant is a little bit over $5 million that will be spent on improving infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, stormwater. So it will definitely have a positive impact on our CRA. Also, the HRP grant, which is still in the works, where we already received some positive comments from the Department of Economic Opportunity about this. This grant will enable us to improve our main street, our downtown corridor, Florida Avenue, Ohio Avenue. So we're definitely, this will be definitely a significant positive impact for our, for our CRA. Then also item number three, I, I do, I do want to mention that, that we had another meeting with the CRA Advisory Board and, and I do want to take a moment to really underline the importance of this advisory board. They really put a lot of time and effort into this. I did attach the meeting minutes of our advisory board to this agenda packet. And I think our new chairman, Mr. Joe Brown, is in the audience today. So should the board have any questions about the advisory board, I would encourage you to reach out to Mr. Brown. And that completes my report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jenke from the Commission?
I just want to make sure that I'm, got my brain going together with the same grant. Is the grant that you're speaking of, I read the paperwork there, I wanted to, was that a matching grant? The big one, the six million or four million or whatever it was?
No, it's 100%.
100%.
And actually, there are two grants. The first one, CDBG DR, is 5.25 million. And the second one that is still in the review process, the CDBG HRP is 4.5 million.
Okay. The first one that you mentioned, the gentleman came and spoke about that one, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that the one I'm remembering? And if, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they get 10% of whatever money we're awarded? Does that 10% come out of our money or do they get that above and beyond from somewhere else?
They do get a percentage, but it's not 10%.
Okay.
It's less than that and I would have to look into our contract that we have with them.
Okay.
They're only allowed, according to CDBG rules, they're only allowed a certain percentage. I would say it's around maybe 1%, something like that. But if you are looking for the exact number, I would have to look it up.
Well, I'd just like to know in the sense, it, does it come out of the money that we get or do they get that from somewhere else?
That money comes from the grant, actually. So we don't have to pay them until we actually get funded.
So it does come out of what we get?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenke. This time we have our consent agenda. Number four, approval of the revised meeting minutes from January 26, 2021. Approval of the meeting minutes from March 23, 2021. Approval of the residential incentive program application for 1316 Minnesota Avenue. Ratification of the CRA for year 2021 mid-year budget amendment. Do we need to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Manager, if you would, call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perna?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nesslin?
Yes. Consent agenda has been motion passed. New business, item number eight, discussion and possible approval of an equit trade service establishment on Florida Avenue near Fourth Street according to ULDC Section 40203. Mr. Jenke?
The engineer of this project submitted a request letter for approval of this new trade service establishment on Florida Avenue. The owner of this property is planning to construct, plans to construct a 4,500 square foot warehouse facility on Florida Avenue. He will, it's, I think, he owns a pipe fitting business and he wants to occupy a third, maybe half of the, the size of, of that warehouse for his, he wants to use it for his business and the other half will be available for rent. According to our land development code, the CRA board has to give approval first before this project can move forward through the planning process. And that's, that's why we have this item here on the agenda today. So at this point, I would recommend to approve this request to, for this trade service establishment contingent upon the development approval. So that would make sure that we're, should the board approve something, it will be always in compliance here. The next step would be for the developer to get the development order. And if he doesn't get the development order for whatever reason, we wouldn't have to change our motion here today. Are there any questions?
I'd like to discuss it a little bit if that's okay. So you're talking about putting a warehouse on Florida Avenue near Fourth Street, but nothing is going to happen based on what you're saying today until the development order comes through?
That would be my recommendation. It's up to the board how the board would like to proceed.
Is that not right in the middle of residential area? It's housing all the way around, right?
The, the properties, the property's land use right now is mixed use. And the, the west side of Florida Avenue, all of that is residential. Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
The east side, so everything east of the property is either mixed use or commercial. So there's PoFOLs right next to it and, and then Highway 77.
It's directly behind the parking lot of PoFOLs.
PoFOLs.
You know how you, right there behind PoFOLs, there's one house.
One house on the corner. Why do you have that house?
Yep, and then there's the empty lot. And that's the empty lot next to that house. And then it, I had a conversation about, about the actual location too. And you said the word warehouse. I, I think you're, you're saying it's a metal building, right? It's, it's not completely going to be a warehouse. There's going to be, it's going to be retail rental or, I, I'd ask, I'd ask to clarify what, what the other part of the building is going to be used for.
Well, if it's a commercial use, they would, and they're located in the CRA, they would have to follow the design guidelines for commercial buildings in the CRA. So for example, corrugated metal would not be allowed as a facade material. They would have to use hardy board or any other type of exterior material.
It would have aesthetic.
Yes, sir.
It would have aesthetic to it.
Any additional questions for Mr. Jenke on this item?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been a motion and second, is there any discussion from the public? All right, no discussion from the public? Commissioner Tender?
Yes, Mayor, if I could just ask this, I just want to make sure that I understand that nothing is going to happen. I'm, I'm not sure, we're just discussing this, but nothing's going to happen until it comes back before this commission, right?
That is correct. They still have to go through the planning process.
Okay.
So this is really the very first step and they still have to come back and go through the planning process. The technical review committee has to look at all of this. So this is just step number one.
Okay, thank you.
City Manager, if you'll call the roll.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perna?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nesslin?
Yes. Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding the proposed demolition of three dilapidated houses in the CRA. 405 East Fifth Street, 1017 Michigan Avenue, 1502 Virginia Avenue. Mr. Jenke?
CRA and code enforcement staff identified three residential houses within the CRA that were severely damaged during Hurricane Michael back in 2018. All three houses have not been repaired since the storm. The building department determined that these buildings are unfit, unsafe according to our Florida Building Code. And the city's magistrate issued orders to demo these houses. I'm requesting here today funding of the demolition of these houses since they may have a negative impact on the taxable values in the neighborhood. Code enforcement reached out to the, to the CRA for funding since they have a lot of houses on their demo list and funding is very limited. So we're simply trying to avoid to postpone the demolition just because of the lack of So I'm here to propose to utilize the special assessment method to recoup the funds. And that way we would be placing the expenses for the demolition onto the property's tax roll rather than recording a lien for them. With this method, we should be able to recoup the, these expenses within the next 12 to 18 months.
Isn't that the method that the code enforcement already uses?
Well, it was just implemented and I, you want to chime in?
Right, that's the one we, we just earlier this year amended our codes to allow nuisance abatements to go on the tax roll. So this will be the first batch really of demos.
But he's saying that the code enforcement needed funding. Why does the CRA get involved?
These, these are in the CRA.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
The CRA is allowed to spend money on demolitions. I think it's a matter of, the city needs the money to do the demos and then we can recoup it on the tax roll later. So we have to basically, you know, the city has to spend the funds first. And it looks like this was, the CRA had the money for demolitions. So it was really just a funding source. It didn't have to come out of the, the general fund on these particular projects that are actually in the, in the CRA.
Also, I, I think I know where you're going with this, Commissioner Perna, but do we have a cost factor? What's it going to cost to demo three homes?
Yes, the cost of the demolition of all three homes is $31,750.
And am I correct on this, Mr. Ovos? To do it on the tax roll like the thing that we just passed for code enforcement, if the homeowner chooses not to do that, does that property become property of the city? If they do not pay it on the tax roll, the 30?
It's a lien, isn't it?
Not automatically. So what, you know, what will happen is if, and again, new, just so everybody knows where we are, we are, new notices went out to these properties. So they still have, I know two of them actually got, got served, so they do have some time if they want to do it themselves, although we don't expect them to. But they were all reading notified of the potential that this could become a special assessment to go on their tax bill. So if the city spends the money, we put the lien on there, we do the special assessment later on this year in September and it goes on the tax bill, if they don't pay it, anybody in the public has an opportunity to, to buy that tax certificate. And then that happens every year and nobody else would be able to own it unless it's unpaid for three consecutive years. So say you just said, all right, there's an unpaid tax bill here for $10,000. As an investor, you can go buy that, that tax certificate, hold on to it for three years and then apply for a tax deed. So the city wouldn't necessarily be the one doing that. It'd be some investor in the community. And then the owner would always have the opportunity to redeem that and they'd have to pay interest and fees, but.
So what you're saying is they really don't have to pay it on this coming up tax roll? They could sit on it for three years?
Well, just like any, I mean, some people, if they don't pay their taxes, then the notice goes in the paper and then the community is invited to pay the tax certificate. So, so at least, if that happens, that means those taxes do get paid to the, to the tax collector and then we would get our money. So really you would hope that some, you know, either these owners pay their taxes or an investor comes in and buys that certificate. If no investor buys it, then yeah, it could just sit there for a couple of years.
But it's like giving the homeowner a head start. If we demo it, they could possibly rebuild then on it, right?
Well, we've been, the city has been working with both homeowners for the last 12 to 18 months and nothing really has happened. We reached out to non-for-profit organizations to find a way to sbp.org and also Florida Rebuild to, to see if, if they can help facilitate with the rebuild process. And both organizations were unsuccessful to come to a solution with the property owners. So I think we really went down all the possible avenues that we can possibly do from our end. And I feel like we reached a point where we need to take action because for the city it's about public safety and public health. And these demolished, or these, these damaged homes, they're slowly but surely turning into a public health and public safety issue.
I just want to be clear that you, you started your original statements where the code enforcement has an agenda of homes they want to demolish already, correct?
Yes.
And have been. Okay. And because you're going to, these are in the CRA and you're funding them, does that move them up on the list?
Yes, that is correct.
So they'll be done in priority because they're CRA and they're funded from, by the CRA?
Correct. Because if funding is, I think code enforcement probably deals with two or three dozen of these dilapidated houses across, all over the city. And eventually we would be, code enforcement would be getting to that point to, to tear down these houses, but it, it could be another two or three years.
You, you've pinpointed these houses because of the need for the, you know, action?
Because they're in the CRA?
Yeah.
And because they have a negative impact on the taxable value of the CRA. That's the purpose why I'm standing here.
Is that okay for the CRA to get ahead of the, of what's already in place?
Yeah, I mean, there's no legal priority. I mean, code enforcement can go out there. We've got orders on all these properties. So it just so happens that some of the, some of the dilapidated structures happen against the CRA.
I'm just, I'm just coming from the point of a homeowner that there might be backlash because hey, hey, why am I not in line with the other houses? Now because this is in a CRA, you're moving it up, it's happening faster, you know? So I'm just, that's, that's the only reason I'm devil's advocate on that.
And it normally doesn't work that way as far as the homeowner wanting their house torn down. These people have just hid their head in the sands and ignored us.
No homeowner, they probably doesn't, but they were thinking of a timeline, like where do I fall or, you know, you know, some people are scrambling for time on this kind of stuff. So.
And then I have another question that, something you just said, there's, are there any of these addresses with the homeowner still living in the house?
No.
They're all left?
All, all three buildings are vacant.
Ben, did they look into PPDR programs or rehoused bay or any of those, do you know?
I don't know if they reached out to that. We, we tried to actually, to find a way how we could possibly salvage one or two of the homes, but different contractors and also the, the building department looked at the structural integrity of each home and they determined it's, it cannot be saved.
Yeah.
That's, that's a simple answer that I got from them.
Mr. Jenke, I think, in, in, from our, from what I recall in our conversation about this last week, you also mentioned like the health issue, that it, maybe one or all of these homes have become rat infested at this point?
Uh-huh. I know one of them that's bat infested.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, actually.
That's my understanding. And so I, I think I attached some pictures to the agendas to kind of give you a better idea what the condition of the, these houses are. And so the roof's caved in, that means that you have a lot of water damage and, you know, it has been raining into these homes for the last 18 months or 24 months. So it's everything, there's mold all over the place, you've got rodents and so on.
Jamie, Commissioner Warwick?
Do we know how many, if there's any more of these houses that are in CRA that are going to be going down the same road?
I think this is the list for the CRA area. And as a positive example, I would like to mention 938 Ohio Avenue, which is the commercial building here at the corner of 10th and 77. That was just purchased by an individual and he, he said, I'm going to renovate this. This, this house or this, this right next to Adams Pharmacy, this house was on the list as well to be demolished. But the new property owner said, I'm, I'm going to get a structural engineering report done. I want to renovate this. He was convinced about the, the good location. So he decided to go ahead and renovate it. So we took it off the list because there is no reason for us to get involved in this if the property owner decides to renovate it.
I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea if, if there is more, about how many more do you think will be going down the same road? I know you can't give me an exact number because, you know, someone may end up fixing their house and get, figuring it out, but if you had an idea.
As, as of today, this, this is it for the CRA, but I know code enforcement has, has a lot more.
I'm going to ask Chief Rainey if he'll come up that code enforcement is under him and give you a better understanding of how we're doing code enforcement. We took our direction from this commission that you wanted the city cleaned up. And so, but just, just so you know, we have a list of, of houses, dilapidated houses that are public safety. And Ben recognized the ones that were in the CRA. And he can take those houses and put them before the board for you all to decide. And then there's a list that's for the city that will be coming your way at some point. So Chief Rainey?
You, Ms. Vicki kind of answered everything. Ben went through the CRA and these are the three, the only three that we're aware of in the CRA that need this attention. There are several outside of the CRA, but again, it takes funding. And just like Ben worked with the guy over at Scoops to try to get that, you know, he, he wanted to basically, you know, renovate the building and make sure it was structural safe, structurally safe. The same is happening with the residences. I think there's one at Eighth and Virginia that we just, you know, we were going to, that was on the demo list, but it's up for sale now. So we're working with realtors. We're doing everything we can not to spend the city's money, let the homeowners come in or let a buyer come in and renovate these properties that were destroyed. Because at the end of the day, even though it goes on the tax roll, we're going to foot the bill upfront. So it, Marla and our other officer have been working very closely with residents, but these are the only three, Mr. Warwick, that I'm aware of in the CRA and, and Ben. Any other questions?
I know, Ben, you mentioned the, the ice cream scoops. I, I, I got the call from a realtor on that and his, his outlook was that, that he had the buyer lined up, but it was, it was, it was past time and you were going to tear it up, tear it down. But when I, when I got him in front of you guys and he had said that he wanted a structural engineer to go in there and look at it and whatnot, because, you know, we, we've got to be cognizant of that as the city. If we, if we, if we can work with a realtor and a new buyer.
We need to compromise, obviously.
Yeah, but like, for instance, that, that particular building, if it went down, that property would have been worthless because you'd have to rebuild it at new code. And there would be, you'd have to put a retention pond on there. There'd be no, there'd be no sense in having even parking and stuff because it's a small lot. So we, we just got to, just remember that every situation with these properties is a delicate situation, you know? So I, I think we're doing the right thing. I'm just, I'm just trying to air everything out here before we, before, before we go, go forward on things. So that's a, that's my take on it. But the, the realtor, when he called me, he thought he was at a dead end. He thought he, he thought he wasn't able to sell the property because it was scheduled to be torn down. But we, we got past that, but he, he, he wouldn't have called me if he didn't think it was a lost cause. So we just got to remember that, that, that working with those kind of things is real important.
So they did close it?
It avoids, it avoids us, our expenditure on, on tearing something down and it redevelops something to, hopefully, you know, it's going to look a lot better as an office building than what it looks like now. So.
So they did close on that deal?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
They're already cleaning it up and making progress.
I'm pretty sure it was ERA Realty, it was, he, he had a buyer and, and Ben actually met the buyer and talked with him and stuff, right? So.
And we do work with every property. We just, if there's any way that we can help a owner, we do that issue mentioned, Bill mentioned, excuse me, Ben mentioned. We went out to several nonprofits, tried to help them get this repaired. We gave, gave them names of resources. And, and if anytime a buyer comes in and wants to buy a property, fix it up, the city is not going to say no. We are going to keep that property and let them renovate it and it can, it can stay there. So there, it is a long process and I'm sure you all can attest to that.
I don't, our list is very long, is it not?
Yes, ma'am.
Of properties that still?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Over in Rhode Island and that area over there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion from the Commission?
You can get a motion in a second and then ask for discussion.
Is there a motion from the Commission?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we, that we proceed with, with, with discussion from the public and further from the commission, so. If I, there's a second.
It's been motioned.
I'll second.
All right, it's motion in second. Is there commentary from the public?
I'm Betty Ford. Good morning. I'm the one owns the house on Michigan that's to be demoed. And the, the 5th Street is my, was my mom's. Okay, I've been, I've been working with ReBuild and they told me Saturday, but they, they would get back with me on the Michigan. Plus I've got a man that's wanting to buy it one way or, you know, the other. And he wants to build a new house there. And I thought, you know, if I sell it, then I could take in and probably fix up the one on 5th Street or have it demoed, you know, one of the two. But I am working on it. And two, these letters, they're dated May the 14th. I didn't get them till the 27th. And so that's two weeks, you know, it said 30 days from the day this letter was written, but I didn't get them. I mean, you can look at the, where I signed it, at the post office.
And your 30 days would start running from the date of the receipt? So, and just to clarify, I mentioned it.
The receipt, so when you signed it, your 30 days will start?
Pardon?
He's saying that your 30 days begins when you sign the receipt, not, not the date of the letter?
Right.
Okay.
And so all they're, all you would be doing today is authorizing these demolitions. Once that 30 days runs, obviously unless, you know, she'll have until, or any of these owners would have until that time to come down to the city, pull a permit, get it sold, whatever. But, you know, that 30 days would still have to run from the date they received those letters. And there's, like she says, she mentioned it was the 27th. But we've, we've got a list that I've been updating Ben on as far as when that clock is running. So if, if you approve this today, it's not like the demo is going to happen tomorrow. That 30 day period still has to run and we're in the middle of that.
So you're saying I have more time to try to get this worked out?
A little.
Okay, thank you.
I live there. I'm in the area. I've been involved in this thing for 20 years. My question is, is this answer is, is this house, there's two houses with this lady here. The owner is dead. Your question, did she leave? Yes, she's gone. Okay, that answers that. Did the owner of the other piece leave? No, the answer was incorrect. She's there. She's on her property. Does she pay her taxes on both pieces of property? Does she pay her taxes? Is there a lien on it now? I don't hear an answer. If she's paying her taxes, she as a citizen is doing her right and keeping up with the law. Yes, the house is in bad shape. We've all sat with her and discussed it. The CRA has discussed it, the advisory board has discussed it. There is an answer to this. There's only one winner on this one. And that's going to be the carpetbagger that comes down and buys the property. Bill's on it. CRA is paid for demolition. Then the CRA is going to pay again because he's going to apply for the grant to build the houses there. That could lead up to $10,000. The developer builder doesn't pay any taxes. The taxes, I haven't got an answer yet from the first question, taxes are paid. So who wins here? It's the developer. Who loses here? The person that's paying the taxes, I still don't have an answer. And living within the rules and regulations and now has code enforcement on them at all times. So what you've got here is a simple question that can be answered by sitting down with the owner and helping. You were correct, there have been offers. She has been in negotiations with the people, rebuilders downtown. Whether it's been fruitful, I don't know. But as it stands right now, you've been told that this is going to take three years. Nobody wins except the carpetbagger developer. Thank you.
Hold on, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a question of this gentleman. Can I ask Mr. Walker a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask you, are you, are you saying that you know for a fact that somebody is still living in one of these three properties?
Not living in that property, but living on that property.
In a trailer, I assume? In a trailer, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's another rule that you're going to come down and you're trying to move the RVs off now. So she's going to go, she doesn't have a place to go.
Thank you.
My name is George Outlaw. I live at 1012 Michigan Avenue. And we were talking about the 1017. There's nothing been done to this and it's been three years, guys. The whole side of the house fell. There's been no improvements whatsoever, the yard or anything else. I would like to see you guys move on with this situation. It's an eyesore. Something needs to be done. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. I mean, I love my city, I love my people. I would do anything I can for anybody or even her. I've even offered to buy the property at a real high rate than what it's actually worth. But I live right there and I look at it every day and if I can help, I will. But I'm asking the city to move on with this here, to improve our property. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Brian, I'm not getting into if you should demo it or not. That's besides the point of what I'm asking. Commissioner Perno, you said one of the houses is infested with bats. Is that correct?
I don't know for sure, but I see them.
Potentially.
I live, I live there too.
So my concern is.
Indiana Avenue and I, I look at that house every day. So I look out my back door and I see that house every day. And I do see bats flying around near, in and near that house.
So obviously we know the risks that bats present, so I won't talk about that. But there's actually benefits that bats present as well. And I'm not saying keep the house up for the bats. What I ask is if we're going to demo this house, let's do it in a responsible manner. Because each bat can eat 2 million bugs per year, times however many bats are in there. All I ask is that if it's demoed, that we don't just demo it during the day while the bats are in there sleeping. Let's do something to recognize our ecosystem and keep it intact. That's all. Thanks.
My name is Jim Simmons. I live at 408 East 5th Street, right across the house from 405. I have nothing against Ms. Ford personally, but the house that's there is a total wreck. There is two coons, dozens and dozens of rats in it. It's in bad shape. It's been that way for a while now, ever since the hurricane that I know of. I live right across that, when I walk out on my porch, that's the first thing I see. It's caved in in several places. The carport is caved all the way almost to the ground now. There, in, in that same situation, there's bats flying around, not constantly, but they are there. They are, I mean, you see all kinds of things that come out of that place. And it's not helping my property value at all. As a citizen in Lynn Haven, I'd like to see y'all do the right thing here. I'm sorry for Ms. Ford and her, you know, thing, do anything in the world for her personally. But, you know, this is kind of ridiculous. It's been going on for three years now. I've been told by code enforcement in the past, it's coming down, it's coming down, it never happens. I'd like to see something come to it. I've been fortunately enough to talk to Mr. Jenke by phone. Never have met him before, but seemed like he's tried very hard to come to a solution. And I think this is the only solution there is. Thank you.
You've already had public comment, ma'am? No, ma'am. From understanding, the 30 days started when she signed the.
Correct, so certified letters went out, return receipt requested. And we, once we receive the green cards back, that's the date that we update Ben, so we can calendar it. I don't have the exact date, but I think she mentioned, she may have signed for it on the, on the 27th. But I've got that at my office and I've let, my secretary lets Ben know of those dates. So there is still, you know, a little bit of time left before the 30 days. And at, and at that point, I mean, what you're doing tonight is authorizing them to spend the money on the demo. Obviously they would have to wait for the 30 days and then mobilize whatever, you know, demolition contractor. So it's not like it would happen necessarily on the 31st day, you know?
Now, if she's able to show good faith that she's trying to actually sell the property or that there's actual buyer or something within that 30 day period, would there be some possible extension even beyond our vote today?
Under those orders, they would actually have to, you know, they're ordered to demolish the property themselves. You know, so here's the order, it's an order to abate the nuisance. And so they have that time to go and, and hire a contractor and come into the city and pull a permit. So if they do what they've been told to do, then the city wouldn't necessarily do it. But if, if they don't or it's just, hey, I need more time, that's something they would actually have to, to come back to the, to the commission for.
So if we vote yes on this today to move forward with it and if she finds that someone wants to purchase the property prior to the demolition, then she can come back to the commission and make an appeal that it not get demoed until, let's say that property closes for sale?
Right, I would probably go to, go to Ben and, and start there so he can sort of bet and see if there's an actual contract out there, see when it's going to close. And then, and then, you know, he could let the, let the city manager know and then she could determine whether to postpone the demo if it's in fact even scheduled, you know? So there's, there's definitely some flexibility there. If there's some sort of, you know, real tangible, you know, contract or a contractor that's been hired to do the work and they can come show staff, you know? Even if it's last minute, they can, they can hold on.
Okay.
Mayor? Yeah, I, I would just like to tell the commission here so everybody's aware. I was at a code enforcement meeting where Mrs. Ford was in front of the magistrate and it's been almost two years ago. And her verbiage today is about 100% as it was two years ago. So I just want you to all be aware of that. This is not new.
Yeah, I mean, I think the record, the records are in the packet. I mean, these code enforcement hearings were in July of 2019 and have been going on several times since then.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, she, she asked to speak again and you told her no, but she's, she's on here twice. She has two properties. I would, I would give her a second chance to speak also.
Ms. Ford?
So. Ms. Ford, you, you asked to speak and I, I would, I would never deny you the right to speak when you have two properties involved.
Well, I was just speaking because of Mr. Simmons. They've not been in the house on 5th Street. The back of it, the ceiling isn't, never even got wet. And the reason I was staying over there before the hurricane. In fact, I, the rat poison is the neighbors feeding all the pigeons. And I ask them, you know, don't put the peanuts on my side because I've seen rats. And this was going on a long time ago. And I constantly buy decon and put over there. So I just, you know, want you to know, but anyway, things maybe were looking up is what I'm trying to say. When I can hear, I don't know what rebuilds got plans for my house, but I don't know.
Ma'am, have you heard from ReBuild Bay? Have they sent you a letter or anything?
They called me Saturday and she said, I think we're going to be able to help you. And that's all she said, said, so she's supposed to get back with me.
Well, under this, you'll have 30 days, 25 days in that ballpark, so three weeks to get back. I think if ReHoused Bay comes in and says, we're, we're willing to work with you on something and that changes the entire dynamic or, or whether you have someone wanting to buy the property, for example. So I would, I would definitely stay in touch with ReHoused Bay. Call them every day if you have to, until someone gets and gets you a letter or tries to help you with that. And bring it back to us and, and the whole dynamic could shift.
Commissioner Ward?
I just want to ask Mr. Jenke a question, make sure I understand this. The demolition for all three is $30,000?
That's correct, $31,750.
So if the homeowner had to demo itself, they're going to have to take that cost anyway. So I'm sure that's a comparable price if the homeowner had to do that anyway. So it's not like they're out additional money because the city demoed it as opposed to someone else demoing. Do I have that right?
That is correct. The agenda packet has, shows the three quotes that I received from, or quotes from three different companies. And the $31,750 is the, is the lowest cost to demo these houses.
Okay, thank you.
City manager, if you will call the vote?
Commissioner Aldrich? Commissioner Perna?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Discussion, item number 10, discussion and possible approval of contractor award for the East 15th Street sidewalk project.
This agenda item is about a project that is on my to-do list for this fiscal year. CRA is supposed to construct a sidewalk on East 15th Street between Ohio Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue where Popeyes is. And we reached out to contractors in the community and received three quotes for, for this project. The lowest bidder is a company, however, that the city had a negative project experience with in recent months. So it's the question right now, which contractor the CRA should select for this project? The lowest bid on this project was $29,468. The second lowest bid is $30,997. If I look at the purchasing policy, it tells me to go with the lowest bidder. However, if, if this contractor has demonstrated difficulties actually delivering a product, you know, I, I would question that. And I think the purchasing policy provides some flexibility in that regard to consider maybe the second lowest bidder as an alternative. So I'm here today to request some guidance to go, which contractor I should select for this project.
I, if you're going to discuss, I know that your, your second lowest bidder is very close to your lowest bidder, correct?
That's correct, $1,500, some change.
And if I may say something too, Mayor? I've seen the work of the first one. I've had complaints about the work of the first company and I certainly would not give them any more of Lynn Haven's money. So I would highly recommend going to the second one.
Very good. But I'll make the motion then. That's exactly right.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, motion second.
I'm sorry, what?
We're going to make the motion to go with the. We're going to make the motion to go with the second highest bidder, the second lowest bidder.
Vision construction.
Yeah. Okay.
And just, you know, as, as Ben stated, there is an irresponsible bidder section in our purchasing policy if they've, if they've demonstrated through past performance that they're unable to satisfactorily meet responsibilities of low bidders, or demonstrated through past performance that they don't meet the demands placed upon the contractor of the city. So like you said, if there's, you know, bad prior experiences with that contractor, there is discretion in our purchasing policy to reject that bid and go with the next one. So you just need to make that determination, which you're doing by your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from the public?
Well, that's me. I'm Hugh Sykes, Sykes Concrete, president. My grandfather started pouring concrete in Bay County in nineteen forty-seven. Seventy-four years, we've been placing ready-bakes concrete, we've been supplying concrete, we've been producing concrete pipe, we have installed storm drain systems, we've supplied the sand, the ground, what goes in all the concrete in Bay County. We've been tearing down buildings, land clearing, and we were one of the many contractors that weren't even invited to bid the demolition after the hurricane. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to defend myself. I've been working for the Florida Department of Transportation for twenty-five years. I've worked in Bay County, and every city in Bay County for the last twenty-five years. I've had many of the same satisfied customers over these twenty-five years. Some of these customers were my father's customers. So they all think I'm qualified. We've been working with the city of Lynn Haven for over twenty years, beginning with Moat Drive on Highway seventy-seven to three ninety. We laid all the sidewalks from Highway seventy-seven to three ninety. We finished every single job. We received change orders and requests on every single job. We were paid in full on every single job. Apparently, I was qualified for those twenty years by the city of Lynn Haven and the city engineer Jim Solonina. Now, I've done these little jobs, but I've also done the largest condominium in Panama City Beach, Lake Town Wharf, for three point five million dollars. I assure you, I have the licenses and the bonding, the insurance, everything that's required to do especially these small jobs. We pour concrete every day, every week. Yes, there are going to be some complaints. There was a hurricane. We lost thirty-five percent of our labor pool. We had some issues. Your contractor out here is behind schedule, he's having issues, and we all going to disqualify We've gone, we had thirty employees, we gave out a hundred and fifty W-2s going through people, trying to find supervisors, trying to find experienced help. But we, no matter what, we finished the job, and we satisfied the punch list, and we were paid in full.
Thank you, sir.
And we're given change orders.
Thank you. That's your time.
Okay.
Any additional comments from the public?
Ryan Skry. City attorney pointed out that our procurement policy has procedures in place. My background is in contracts management, twelve years, a lot of that in federal. We have a policy in place that talks about that. I'm sure the city, if they're choosing to go this route, has the proper documentation to demonstrate the either former non-compliance, or irresponsiveness, or unresponsiveness, however you want to dictate it, of a vendor that is being foregone for a higher bid. So city has a policy, follow the policy, make sure you have your documentation in place. It sounds like that's open and shut.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? City manager, if you'll call the vote?
Excuse me. Commissioner Perna?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Item number eleven, discussion and possible approval of the LHPD funding request for the annual fee of four Tagger reader systems.
Lynn Haven Police Department contacted me regarding some financial support for the annual fee of four stationary Taggers. This equipment would help our PD to identify wanted individuals, stolen cars, expired license plates, amber, silver alerts, and so on, that travel through Lynn Haven without having an officer actually sit idle on the side of the road. PD would only have to engage if an alert is being sent by the reader. The device would allow PD to increase its presence in the CRA areas. So it, it basically frees up the, the officer to work in, more in the neighborhoods instead of sitting on the side of the highway for an extended period of time. So Chief Remy, you want to chime in and kind of explain about the system how it works?
Basically, we are running a, more of a portable one right now in the city, and what I was asking Ben to kind of mirror what other cities have done, is to put in the permanent mounted ones, the north and south corridor, and then the east and west corridor coming into the city. This has been very successful with the beach PD. They have over ten cameras on the beach. We have some success stories, obviously, from the single one that we have, but we're only trapping southbound traffic. We've been able to apprehend sexual predator, an aggravated sexual battery suspect that was out of another county, had been on the run for almost four months. We've had over forty arrests on wanted persons that the Tagger reader hit on. The recent carjacking you saw that went into Walton County, those victims were taken in Nashville at gunpoint with an AK-47, and they obviously had to come south. And it's just a way to protect the city of the evil that's out there. And they're worth their money, every cent, to have them. I've seen it firsthand with the trial with the single one we have, and I just feel that these are the most highly traveled roads in the city, which is seventy-seven. Our traffic count's up to around twenty thousand a day on Highway seventy-seven. And we need to keep the evil out of the community, and this is just an extra eye to help us do that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for chief or Mr. Jenke?
I have questions for Mr. Jenke. I agree with the machines for sure, I've seen what they do. My, the most obvious question here is, number one, why would the CRA pick up the tab for these and not come out of the police budget? And my second question is, in your, and this might be a question for Mr. Brown, but was this a unanimous thing when you met with your committee, that they all agree that this was a good idea?
Okay. So first of all, just to, for the record, Police Department is requesting ten thousand dollars, so this is the amount that we're talking about here today. It was discussed at the CRA Advisory Board, and the board decided not to take any action on this item. So they didn't say, yes, we're in favor of it, or they, nor did they say, we're against it.
Okay. And, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, your, your question regarding why is the CRA really involved in this? I, I would refer back to actually the last page of the agenda report. Any type of CRA expense should be traced, should be able to, or should be able to justify any type of expense with the CRA plan. If it's something mentioned in the CRA plan, then we can spend money on this, CRA dollars on it. And actually, on, on page fifty-three of the CRA plan, it says here under action strategies, whenever possible, increase the visibility of the police force in the area to prevent crime. So this is the set of information I'm getting from the CRA plan that could be connected to this funding request. It is up to the board's discretion how you interpret this, and if, if the CRA should pay for it, or if... Yeah. I'll leave it at that.
So the cost, ten thousand dollars, are, are we actually purchasing these four machines? Or is this some kind of rental fee, or what is it exactly?
This, this is the, a one-year lease or, or fee that, that the Police Department would have to pay in order to get these four stationary readers installed in the CRA. So it would have to be renewed for year two or three, and then, but we're not, we're not talking about this right now, the request I received from PD is to get ten thousand dollars for this current year.
And that's installed?
Yes.
I think the machines are doing amazing job, and I do know that Chief Remy has told me in the past, they can almost keep up with them sometimes. But I, my main question is, you know, why are we taking it out of CRA budget and not the Police Department's budget? Thank you.
Additional questions from the commission?
I've made the motion to approve. I think the machines are invaluable. The safety of, of our citizens is of the utmost importance, and if it's going to catch a sexual predator, or somebody that's, you know, involved in bad things, hey, it's, it's worth the dollars to me.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any discussion from the public? No discussion. City manager, if you'll call the vote?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perna?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Meeting adjourned. We'll start commission meeting in five minutes. We'll start commission meeting in five minutes. invocation and pledge of allegiance by Pastor Brad Friday of Living Waters Ministries of Lynn Haven, Florida. Let us pray. Father God, we thank and praise you for your love and kindness and grace, your mercy. I thank you for all of these elected officials. Thank you for their staffs and I thank you for the citizens of Lynn Haven. And Father, we, we ask right now for your, your divine intervention. Father, that you would step in and give us direction on what to do, how to do and when to do. God, that your glory might abide in the midst of all of the different meetings and all of the different conferences and all of the different decisions that have to be made in Lynn Haven. Father, that you would provide insight to those who are in office, to those who are in position to make these decisions. And God, that you would provide insight to those who have questions. God, that they would be in alignment, that all of them would be in alignment, that they would be one, unified, one body in this city. And Father, I pray against all of the forces of darkness that would come against them, knowing oh Lord, that there are forces that don't, that are designed to, to cause them to fail. But God, we speak into the atmosphere of this place and this body, that your spirit would preside and provide the strength and the power to overcome all of the different strategies and all of the different pitfalls that would come. And God, I pray that this meeting today would be productive. God, that your glory would abide here and be manifest in your people. In the name of your son, Jesus, I thank and praise you for all of these things, that they would be manifest in your people. Amen. All right, the pledge of allegiance. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Friday. Now for the mayor's report. There has been some discussion in previous meetings as it relates to public commentary. I have followed up with the city manager as well as the city attorney to discuss some possible resolutions as it relates to answering questions from the public in regards to public commentary. So one of the solutions that has been proposed is that we could move public commentary from item number seven to actually item number three. That way after public commentary, doing our mayor's report and/or commissioner's report, if the mayor or commissioner wants to address a question that has been asked, then we can do so during that time of report. What we would not allow is a bantering of back and forth between the commission and the public. And so that is something that we've discussed and think could possibly bring more decorum to our meetings and be a win-win for both the commission and for the public. So is there any approval from the commission to move public commentary to item number three?
I'm okay. Want to make a motion to do that? That's fine with me. I'll make the motion to move it to item three.
Is a motion necessary Kevin? With it, I mean, the chairman puts together?
Yeah, the mayor can organize the agenda, other than, you know, the basics where we do old business, new business, that's set in our code, but I think he was just asking for consensus.
Well, I would second your motion Pat if we did.
Yeah, so he made a motion or whatever. That's fine with me.
So this time we'll have our public commentary. Please remember doing public commentary to address your concerns to the chair. Also, if there is an item on the agenda, please wait until that time to discuss that item and not doing public commentary.
Can I say something before we go to public commentary real quick? Can we address as far as, I know the last commission talked about not having Q and A during public commentary. What's your position on that?
That's why we're moving public commentary to item number three, so that if a question is asked, then we can respond to that question in our comments as mayor or commissioner. Because what happened, what can happen with the Q and A is that we can lose decorum.
Go back and forth.
We can go back and forth and so.
I think that makes sense.
So that's why we're moving it to number three, so that if someone asks a question, then we can have a response for it if we desire to respond to it.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time we have public commentary. Yes. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Rich Walker, 1106 Michigan Avenue. Comment, as it stands right now, you do not have a mayor pro tem. I've researched the records and researched previous history of how the mayor pro tem is chosen. I do not find anything in paper telling you how to do it. I did take a lesson from previous city managers and commissioners and mayor. Their selection in the old days was correct, a nice way to do it. It gave a good flow through all of you. It allowed everybody to get a chance out of it in four years. You know, your election cycle is two, is four years. So that would give this mayor pro tem, if adopted the way you want to do it, a way of learning how to be a mayor, practicing, not being in office mayor pro tem for four years. I would like to strongly make a request that you set up a procedure for choosing the mayor pro tem. For example, nobody can foretell what would happen tomorrow. You never know. I find this out in occupations that I've had as secretaries, if I get lost or something, get sick, who's going to take my place? I do not see a procedure within the city of Lynn Haven for selecting the mayor pro tem, the tenure, and how the rotation would be. I would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public commentary? Any additional public commentary? Thank you. Now we'll have our proclamation. We'll ask the representatives from Mosley High School and the baseball team to please come forward. Thank you gentlemen for joining us today. It's a special day, I know, for you as well as for our city. The proclamation reads, whereas A Crawford Mosley High School, located at 501 Mosley Drive, Lynn Haven, Florida, is a secondary level high school serving grades nine through 12, and whereas A Crawford, A Crawford Mosley High School is one of the largest high schools in North Florida with almost 1,900 students and nearly 125 faculty and staff members. And whereas A Crawford Mosley High School baseball team matched up with Archbishop McCarthy Mavericks in the state playoffs for the past three years, and whereas A Crawford Mosley High School baseball team head coach, John Hudson, expressed and set high expectations for the Dolphins to come out and play well, and whereas A Crawford Mosley High School baseball team never gave up on their dream of one day winning another state 5A championship. And whereas on May 26th, 2021, A Crawford Mosley High School Dolphins baseball team won the prestigious title as a 5A state championship team over Archbishop McCarthy Mavericks by beating them nine to two. And whereas the entire community of the city of Lynn Haven have encouraged and supported the A Crawford Mosley High School baseball team Dolphins in their hard work, efforts, and celebration as a state baseball 5A champions. Now therefore, by the virtue and authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Lynn Haven and on behalf of the city commission and all the citizens of Lynn Haven, I do hereby recognize the A Crawford Mosley High School Dolphins baseball state 5A champions by proclamation. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lynn Haven to be affixed this 8th day of June, 2021. Any comments?
Quickly, you know, the, the kids went out and to play the way they did under the circumstances and, you know, like he said, that's what I felt like it was. It was a dream that they'd had since they were young kids and, and I know when we came back, the overwhelming support that we had and the celebration really was just something that they'll never forget and really appreciate the city of Lynn Haven for all you all did for us. And like I say, they, it was overwhelming to see the people who we, we run into now that we come back and say, while we were watching it, we, you know, tears in our eyes, you know, everybody loves to watch a team fulfill a dream and, and they're still getting a lot of support from Lynn Haven now as they're, every day they run into people who say they were watching it. So I appreciate that and appreciate city Lynn Haven. Thank you.
Listen, Coach Hudson and his team, we were just so proud of them. I tell you, he has worked so hard for several years and it was just a joy to watch him. But I too just want to say thank you mayor and thank you the city of Lynn Haven and I tell you, I wasn't, I was waiting for them to arrive with our pep rally, so I missed some of that, but when those kids got off that bus, I thought they, they really felt like they had won a national championship and was going to the White House. That's how good Lynn Haven made them feel and I really appreciate that and it's a tribute to you and we really thank you for your service and all you do for our, for our city. Thank you.
And I do want to say thank you to city manager and all of her staff and all of the citizens of Lynn Haven that celebrated the Mosley Dolphins on winning that championship. It was a great day for them. I was able to be a part of that celebration and so thank you all so much for supporting our Mosley Dolphins. This time I'd like to just do a quick week in review. And so with the week in review, did some things in the office. So my usual schedule is to come to the office at least four or five days a week to meet with the city manager and other city staff to see if there are any mayoral duties that I need to fulfill at that time. Also to get a daily briefing on what's happening in our city. And so I do thank the city manager for making herself available to meet with me on a regular basis so that I can be abreast of what's happening in our city. In addition to that, I was able to meet with other city staff, excited to meet recently with the city manager and also the director of community services as we discuss the potential three-on-three basketball tournament, which will be coordinated with a back-to-school effort at Kane Griffin Park. And so we're looking forward to doing that hopefully on July the 31st. And so you'll get more information about that as that solidifies. So really excited about that. As it relates to being in the community, you were able to witness one of the things that I was able to participate in, in the community, and that is celebrating the Mosley Dolphins. It was a wonderful celebration and I'm glad that I was able to be a part of it, from riding along with the chief to actually being there at the school whenever the baseball team arrived and got off the bus. And one of the things that brought me great joy as a mentor at Mosley High School along with the principal, able to know that I actually have a relationship with some of those guys on the baseball team, know they're not just good players, they're also good people. And so not only do they represent us on the baseball field, but they also represent us in life and in the community. And so we have a great group of young men that's representing not only Mosley, but the city of Lynn Haven. And so I was very delighted about that. Also had a chance to attend the Memorial Day service at Kent Forest Lawn Funeral Home. That was a, a nice display to honor our fallen soldiers in the history of America and so was able to attend that and, and see some other officials and city leaders there as well. I'm also was able to attend Peace in the Park, that was at Kane Griffin Park during Memorial Day weekend and so able to go out and meet various community residents and get congratulations and just continue to build relationships with our community. I'm also, as being mayor and getting some TV time, people do recognize me as mayor whenever I go out. And so as I'm dining at certain restaurants in our city, I get different questions. And so received one question from an employee of a restaurant, was able to follow up with the city manager about that particular property issue and that issue was able to be resolved within that day. And so I'm thankful for the, the expedited efforts of our city manager and their staff to address the issues that our citizens do have whenever it's something that's, that can be easily resolved. Also had a chance to just, again, just meet various residents in our community and just continue to build those relationships. As it relates to being in the state, I've reached out to the Florida League of Cities, specifically the Florida League of Mayors. Though our membership is paid, we have not been actively involved in that, in the Florida League of Mayors. And so I've talked with the directors there and so we're going to engage in being actively involved in the Florida League of Mayors. There's a Zoom conference coming up on June the 17th and so I'll be participating in that and just received a welcome letter from, from them encouraging us to be active with the Florida League of Mayors. And so I'm excited about those possibilities and that potential as well. Again, in regards to final remarks, just want to encourage us as a city to continue to work together because we are greater together. That's my report. At this time, we'll move to our commissioners' reports. Commissioner Aldrich, do you have anything to report?
It's been, it's been a pretty normal couple of weeks for me, mayor. It's kind of the same. We field questions whether you're out in public, whether you're at the dance school, whether you're at the restaurant, whatever it may be. And just trying to, to help the citizens best we can, keep the city moving forward. I do want to shout, you know, kudos again to Mosley. We've, this area, as we know, everyone in this room has been through a very hard three years. So again, that just made that accomplishment that much more special to me, coming out of this area of the state. I think it was just a highlight of 2021 so far. Other than that, we're here, we're working hard and I appreciate our employees, all the hard work they're doing. I know you guys have noticed probably the medians, they're out there every Monday morning, Tuesday morning, cleaning up, taking pride in what we have here. And I'm, I'm very proud of our whole staff and employees here. Other than that, I have no more report, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner Perno, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, mayor. I did have a little R and R in the last two weeks. I went, I went off to St. Augustine on, on third, Wednesday of last week and actually went over there with a couple of friends and we played golf, but I talked to commissioner, I talked to Chief Police Ramey and I did meet a police officer over in St. Augustine and I cornered him and I told him thank you for the folks that that came over after Hurricane Michael. And he happened to know several of them, so I didn't get a chance to tell you before the meeting, Ricky, but I relayed the message and we were forever thankful to those people that came and helped after the storm. And I did, I did, I did further my education with the, with the St. George and St. Andrew Bay Estuary Program. Fellow who's in the Estuary Program with me is a guy named Darryl Boudreaux and he's with the Northwest Florida Water Management District. And he met with me and in, in the meeting, he had, he had just a bunch of information about grants and so forth. And I, I couldn't help but think, well, you know, you're talking to me, but really who you need to talk to is our department heads, the fellows who, 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 who think they need funding for different projects and whatnot. So I, it was actually, and congratulations to Mosley High School, of course, but it was actually at the, I was down at the corner of Mosley Drive and Highway 77 and I cornered Chris and, and I talked to Ty and got the blessing of the city manager. And we had a meeting the very next day with Darryl Boudreaux and Greg and, and we, we got our eyes opened to several, hopefully, good grant opportunities that we have that can help build our waterways, Bay Savers in the bay and, and just some stuff that can actually increase vegetation, enhance the beauty of our parks and, and help clean water around our city. So I was very excited by that. So I, I really, I really think something good's going to come of that. And I want to thank all of our city employees as usual and for everything they do. So that's my report on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perno. Commissioner Ward, anything to report?
Yes, sir. I don't have a whole lot. I hope you guys don't think that's what I'm going to say every meeting. It's been, first two meetings, I've been pretty busy. As I said, the last meeting, had a death in the family, so I've been out of the area. Just got back this past Sunday, or Monday morning at 12:30 in the morning. So it's been pretty eventful for me. But I just want to say again, thank you for everyone's prayers and thoughts. It means a lot to me. And I will say that yesterday I had a meeting with the city manager. We spoke for probably about, what, two and a, two and a half hours. It was a constructive meeting. Learned a lot. We didn't agree on everything, but it was a very constructive meeting. Learned some areas that I need to educate myself on, the big one being the planning process, development orders and things like that. So that's one of the things I'm going to work on. And I'm just really happy to see a lot of people here. And I really hope that this is a sign that all meetings will have this many people here because it's important to get a lot of community involvement. And I hope that you guys continue to come. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Attender?
Thank you, Mayor. The last couple of weeks have been pretty busy for me. I have met with the city manager the week before and I've gotten miscellaneous projects from residents that I've turned over to her and that she's taking care of them. Some of them will be months down the road, but for the most part, I think they're all rectified fairly quickly. As many of you know, I try to represent the people and residents come to me with different issues. I don't always agree with those issues, but I was elected to represent the people. So in full disclosure, in the past two weeks, I have been barraged, I mean, every day. I'm not just saying a couple of times. Every day I've been called, seen in person. I had a man pull in front of me, jump out of his truck, and I wound my window down and he wanted to discuss what was happening with the recent incident with Chief Ramey in regards to election tampering. I don't know what to tell these people because as Kevin Obos, our attorney, stated at the last meeting, and I may ask you to go over that again, just so that for those who are watching, can hear your explanation to this incident. I have the ethics code in front of me and I do want to read it for the public behind that camera over there. Which brings me to another issue. It's kind of, it's kind of funny, but I think a lot of people don't realize this. Yesterday morning, Kevin and I talked yesterday too. Yesterday morning, I called our HR director and there was some miscommunication between us. I called her to ask her if she would be at this meeting, if she was going to be here. I asked her if she would have the ethics code on her, in her possession. She explained to me that I could get it over the internet on our website. I said, okay, and we said, see you tomorrow. Fifteen minutes later, Kevin, our city attorney, called me to tell me that I was not allowed to, he didn't say I wasn't allowed to talk to employees, but I was not allowed to direct them or give them direction. I never asked our HR director to do a reading or anything like that. And I explained that to Mr. Obos. As city commissioners, I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are allowed to talk to city employees. We are just not allowed to give them any directive. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct. You're not-
Thank you. I thought it was, but anyway, but I think the public needs to know that, that this entire city and everything that happens in it is run by one person, and that's Ms. Gainor. She's the city manager. We are not allowed and nor do we go out as commissioners and ask city employees to do anything. And that was just important for me to let everybody know. We don't do it, we're not allowed to do it. And I know we have conversation with city employees and we can, you know, get them to do things by just harassing them a little bit, but, and that was said by our last mayor pro temp. So with that said, and because I speak for the people, I just want to read this. And it's not, they just keep asking me questions. And if any of this commission or anybody else can give me answer, a satisfactory answer, my main concern is that our people are losing faith. They're losing faith in our policies and they're losing faith in politics. And that should not be, especially for this city, it should not be. Our employee policy 101 Ethics Code, the purpose of this policy is to reaffirm, or reaffirm, the city of Lynn Haven's commitment to the highest standards of legal and ethical conduct in its business practices to ensure that all employees adhere to those standards. It has been the longstanding policy of the city of Lynn Haven to maintain the highest ethical standards in the conduct of the city of Lynn Haven's affairs and in its relationships with members, suppliers, employees, advisors, and the community that we serve. The members of the city of Lynn Haven's team, employees are expected to accept certain responsibilities, adhere to acceptable business policies or principles in matter of personal conduct, and exhibit a high degree of personal integrity at all times. This not only involves sincere respect for the rights and the feelings of others, it also demands that in both your business and personal life, you refrain from any behavior that might be harmful to you, your coworkers, or the city of Lynn Haven, or that might be viewed unfavorably by current or potential members or by the public at large. Whether you are on or off duty, your conduct reflects on the city of Lynn Haven. You are consequently encouraged to uphold that high, highest standards of professionalism at all times. It would be virtually impossible to cite examples of every type of activity which might give rise to a question of unethical conduct. And by the way, I'm skipping over some of the really boring list things. Would I embarrass my family or friends if they learned of my actions? Would I embarrass, would I be embarrassed to have the public hear about my actions? How would the situation look for me and the city? And those are the questions they ask. Full cooperation with city investigations related to allegations of violations pertaining to oneself or another employee is required. This includes answering all questions honestly, providing complete and thorough information that may be relevant in maintaining confidentiality as directed during the course of an investigation. All employees must conform to ethical and legal standards to abide by the law and to preserve the city of Lynn Haven's integrity and reputation. Failure to adhere to this policy may result in disciplinary action up to and including discharge from employee, or from employment. The responsibility of the city manager shall be responsible for the administration of this policy. I take this seriously and I know a lot of other people that take it very seriously. And just in full disclosure, I told these people that I would read it. I don't suspect it's over. I suspect I'll probably hear more today. And if the attorney like you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would like you to tell me what you told me yesterday in regards to this situation.
Right, well, like we went over in detail at the last, last commission meeting, there are First Amendment rights, whether you're, you know, member, any member of, you know, of the, of this country actually, but that also include public officials, public employees. And those First Amendment rights do allow you to voice your opinion on political matters as long as it's not, you know, you're not doing it and using your position for any sort of undue influence. And like we went through in some, in some detail, this was done on, you know, a Facebook post. I'm not going to go through the whole thing again, but the bottom line is your First Amendment rights are going to trump. And if the city or city manager were to try to do some sort of a disciplinary action, you know, the, the chief or whoever, public employee actually wants to express their First Amendment rights would have, you know, cause of action against the city for violating their First Amendment rights by disciplining them. So that's basically what went over at the last meeting and what I reiterated to you yesterday. There's numerous Supreme Court cases out there that we, that we went through. The Florida statutes carve out an exception for voicing your opinion on, on political, you know, supporting political candidates or what have you. And that's, that's the law of the land right now.
Thank you. And that's my full report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Attender. Thank you for your report. City Manager Gainor, do you have anything to report?
Couple of things. First, let's have our financial update by Kiki Roman.
Good morning. Do you have questions for me this morning? Thank you.
Okay. Next, we want to celebrate our employees. Our Employee of the Month for this month is Karen Faulkner. I'm going to ask Karen and Gloria Thompson if they will come forward. And Gloria's going to say a little bit about Karen. Stephanie is actually Karen's boss, but Stephanie's on vacation. But Gloria works very, very closely with her. So if you will, Gloria.
Okay, Karen Faulkner has been with the city for the past year as our permit specialist in the building department. In her role, Karen processes permits, schedules inspections, and helps maintain our contractors and our property database. She does so much more than that. In this year that Karen has been here, she has made a huge impact in, on the city, on the building department, and has built countless of relationships with our customers. She gets emails very often to tell her thank you for her help. Karen is the first one to jump in to help anybody. She has an excellent customer service. She does very good with customer service that we've had two contractors saying how she needs to teach all of us how to be better customer service. In her role, she has done extremely well and I'm so proud to have her as part of the Lynn Haven Building Department team. Catherine, thank you so much. You do everything very well and I'm so proud of you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. It's Karen. Just a few other things to bring you up to date on. We are looking at starting farmer's market again for the summer. We started last year and it was pretty successful. So we're probably looking at around July 22nd that farmer's market will start and we'll, you'll see more information about that. We're in phase two of legislative paving. The paving project is out for bid. The bid will be open June 28. We are scheduled, when we open this bid, to pave about 4.3 miles. And that was through the legislative paving money. We will have the bid opening for the repairs of the fire station number one and 15th. And that will be at 2 o'clock, Senior Activities Center. The new ladder truck will be in very soon and probably at the end of June. Commission voted to go on and have a new ladder truck. And I will tell you, it is definitely needed. At one time, we were pretty afraid that if a fire broke out about a month ago, we wouldn't actually have a truck to go to a fire because one was out of commission, one needed a part. And so we had our last, we're kind of on our last leg. So thank you, Commission, for doing so. On the economic development side, this is something that we noticed and we want to keep at the forefront. We are sending letters to business owners on Highway 77 and 390. And we want our city to continue to grow and to look good. The corridor, the commercial corridor is, it's really our advertisement by itself. And so we're asking these business owners if they can cut grass, pick up trash around those places. You know, we're going to be planting some new, we've planted, excuse me, some new palm trees. We did the beautification. And we're just asking that businesses, if they have the opportunity to keep that area very nice as people travel through, that is probably a signature for us. You'll see some upgrades to the bark park and thank you very much, Ty, for making sure that has been done. We are seeing a great amount of activity at all of our parks as the kids are at school and people are coming out to enjoy the beautiful city of Lynn Haven. We have scheduled the Lynn Haven Bayou Park and Preserve to open on June 29th. That's on a Tuesday at 9 o'clock. And the public is invited to attend that. And lastly, we, our banners are in. I think Commissioner Aldrich had asked us last year to try to see about getting some banners, patriotic banners to kind of cover Highway 77, Ohio Avenue in Florida. And we, we will soon be calling for hometown heroes for our banners for next month. And then of course, the mayor talked about the 303 basketball tournament, that we are excited and hopefully that will get underway in, in July. Also, I have a check for Tetra Tech in the amount of $23,913 that I always make the commission aware of any consultant or debris haulers that are, that's written out. And that's just my brief, brief report. I do want to mention to you too, the city hall, there is nothing on the city's end or the contractor end, the reason that has not been demolished yet. We were talking yesterday, I was meeting with Commissioner Ward. Before we start any projects, usually, even though it's been approved by FEMA, even though the money is there, after we've chosen that contract, it goes back through FEMA again. And Commissioner Ward is very familiar with this. Right now, it is in tribal review and that means tribal- Right now, it is in tribal review, and that means tribal has 45 days to look at and make sure that there's no burial ground, any kind of historic ground in what we're doing with the Old City Hall. So as soon as that comes out of tribal review, everything else has been processed and approved, we will be demolishing part of Old City Hall. And that is my report. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to, is the farmer's market going to be at Sheffield Park where it was before?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the tearing down or the demolishing of the Old City Hall, this is another question I am asked weekly. The question is, and this is my understanding, so please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what I'm telling everyone. The front part of Old City Hall will remain intact.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to where the addition was put on, and you can see exactly where it was, that's the only part that's going to be tore down. Is that correct?
That is correct. You can actually see where it is, where in the front side of it, if you see that entrance way that people used to go into, if you kind of use that as your angle of that cutoff there.
Right.
Then we'll add some additional remodel on that area there.
Awesome. I'm actually telling the truth. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is my report.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney?
Yes, we have some items regarding the Bayou Park and Preserve. As you recall, it was either the last meeting or one before that, we actually approved the, it was like an acceptance agreement, basically, where they had gotten to substantial completion at the end of March. Just as a little bit of background, several years ago, there was a donation agreement coupled by a DEP grant for operation and maintenance. That was about $3.5 million. The donation agreement had to do with BP funds. Obviously, that's how this all got started, and there was, you know, they acquired 90, the Trust for Public Land, this not-for-profit entity, acquired the site and put it under contract to improve it with the contractor. And that part is finally over. And as part of the donation agreement, once that park is complete, they actually deeded over to the city. And so a couple of weeks ago, we did like an acceptance agreement, and Friday afternoon, we actually received the signed deed. So that's being processed for recording. Yesterday may be recorded already. I haven't looked yet. So once the city has that deed recorded, that is when the maintenance responsibility shifts to the city. Again, we do have $3.5 million of grant funds. It is a reimbursement grant, so we would have to pay the operation and maintenance and then send in pay requests to the DEP grant administrator. And I know that Ty is aware of that and has that process in place. So that's the update on the Bayou Park. We do have the deed. It's being recorded, but now we're responsible for maintenance. What we would ask for some possible action on today, part of the contract that the Trust for Public Land had with their contractor, Reliant South, included a year of landscaping They are two years, two months into that right now, so there's actually 10 months remaining on that. It's a subcontract with Lawnscapes. It's $11,002 per month. So what they would ask is that the city, obviously, now that we have the deed, we would pick up that remaining landscaping contract, or we would be responsible to pay Lawnscapes the $11,000 a month for the next 10 months, at which time we can, you know, go out for bid or renew it or do it in-house, you know, figure out some way to go long-term. But there is the request that we pick up that, the remainder of that landscaping contract for the next 10 months. Again, this would be reimbursable through that DEP grant. So we did let them know, and they've sent emails out to DEP, to everybody who's involved. But I think we would ask for a motion, you know, a vote to actually approve the assignment of that Lawnscapes contract for the next 10 months, and then city staff can figure out where to go after that 10 months is up.
So if I'm understanding you, this $11,002 is actually reimbursable, so it's not costing us?
We would have to pay it and then do a, I think, probably a monthly reimbursement request. And that grant is, it's $3.5 million, plus or minus. It's intended to last us about 10 years or until the $3.5 million goes, and that's operation and maintenance. So obviously, as we start staffing up this park, I'm sure those reimbursement requests are going to be higher, but the landscaping piece of that is going to be the $11,002.92 a month. And that's just for the next 10 months until we figure out what else.
Any additional questions from the Commission?
Yes, sir. I personally would like to at least get a bid from our current lawn maintenance people that are doing the parks and the cemeteries and see what they would charge us to add that on to our contract. Is that possible?
Well, I think...
Because that's more than we pay.
This is a 98-acre park. I'm sure it's going to be pretty, you know, be pretty high. And again, this is just for the remainder of the 10 months on their 12-month subcontract. So I'm sure what will happen is probably eight months from now, Ty will put a bid together and we'll go out for long-term landscaping. But this contract's already in place, and they're just asking that the Trust for Public Land, you know, stop it as of the date of the deed, which is what we agreed to, that once we got the deed, we're now on the hook. So it needs to be maintained. We don't really have 30 or 45 days to go and get new bids. I mean, it would just be unmaintained for that period of time. So I think we would ask for, and again, they can go out, we can go out for bid. We don't have to wait eight months, or we can do that pretty soon. But we do need to keep this park maintained, and my understanding is that our in-house staff can't really handle that much right now. So there's already a contractor out there doing it. They've been doing it for the last two months. So that's the request.
You know, I think Ms. Vicki and I are probably the only ones that's been out there, possibly in this room, unless you snuck out there and don't say anything if you did. And I have to say, it was a beautiful park. It is an absolutely beautiful park, and the landscaping, I mean, it's next level. When you guys get to see this, you're going to be so proud of this park and the way it looks. And, you know, we did come into the agreement. We have very little investment in this overall, and especially for what we're getting. So that being said, you know, I would make the motion that we honor our word and pick up the $11,000 a month to be reimbursed out of the $3.5 million monthly.
Motion's been made.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any discussion from the public?
Ryan Scray, 1702, Missouri. I didn't sneak out there. Ty brought me out there. I'm actually helping map the disc golf course. I didn't notice Ty here, but I had a question, and I messaged him real quick, waiting for a response. But I was just curious if this was already, this 10 months was already accounted for in his budget out of those reimbursable funds? He just said the money left for the 10 months has already been put into escrow, and we will be paying from that escrow account to Lawnscapes instead of the contractor. So it's not like the city's on foot for this money. They'll have to go, you know, go out and find that later. I just wanted to, you know, address that, that it's not like it's coming out of our budget. It's coming out of that reimbursable budget and that escrow.
Right, with the DEP escrowed the funds, so it's still, we still have to make monthly requests, so it may just be a 30-day turnaround or something, but we would, every month. And it wouldn't just be the $11,000. It'd be whatever other operation costs that we find ourselves having now that we have the deed.
Any other additional comments from the public on this matter?
I have a question. And I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but we have the lawn maintenance to take care of this gift, and we have, obviously, we have to have it insured, I assume. And then, do you have any idea yet what our cost for labor is going to be out at that preserve? Because aren't there going to be employees specifically out there?
There are. I think we talked about this a couple of commission meetings ago. There are already some staff that want to be out there because they have a kind of a love for the nature and love for out there. So we do have a staff member that is, we're going to move out there to be kind of the coordinator of the park. And then we have another part in the grant where we can hire one and a half other people for that. So all of the money that's in escrow, that money will be, help us to support this park for the next 10 years. I can't remember what that monthly cost is right off the bat, but we did budget just in case we open up this park before this budget year. We did budget for Lynn Haven Bayou Preserve. We actually made its own GL so that we could keep up with it.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Gainer, if you would call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Attender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. City Attorney, any additional things for your report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. This time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Item number eight, minutes from the May 25, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Item number nine, approval of recommended appointees Anderson Edwards-Nelson, Stacy Houchens, Aldrich, Rhonda Lersie-Tender, Frank Stevens-Perno, Ryan Scray-Warwick by the Commission for the Infrastructure Certex Oversight Committee. Does the Commission want to remove any of these items from the agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve all of them?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. City Manager Gainer, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Attender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Now we'll be moving on to our old business. Item number 10. This will be the final reading, public hearing for ordinance number 1112, Small Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment for 1503 and 1507 Tennessee Avenue from mixed use to commercial. City Manager Gainer, please read the ordinance 1112 by title only.
An ordinance providing for the adoption pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes of a land use change from mixed use to commercial use for an approximate 1.629 plus-minus acres of property located on Tennessee Avenue in the city of Lynn Haven, Bay County, Florida, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Thank you, City Manager. This is the second and final reading. Ms. Harrison is here to explain and answer any questions.
Just read this. This is the final reading, ordinance 1112, a request for a small-scale future land use map amendment for parcel numbers 10376-000000 and 10372-000000. A combined total of approximately 1.73 acres in size. The parcels are located on the east side of Tennessee Avenue, Highway 390, on the corner of West 15th Street. It has been requested by the owner of these parcels that the future land use map designation of these parcels be allowed to be changed from mixed use to commercial. The current land use of adjacent properties is as follows: to the north, mixed use; south, commercial; east, mixed use; and west, mixed use. The owner would like to amend the future land use map designation of these two parcels comprised of the 1.763 acres from mixed use to commercial. The commercial land use designations allows for a larger variety of commercial uses than the mixed use designation. There is a, in your packet, an attached table of uses from Section 2.0302 of the City of Lynn Haven Unified Land Development Code. This item went before the planning commission meeting on May 18, 2021, for the planning commission meeting. Planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Do we have any, again, any questions from the Commission? One question I do have is I did go by to try to visualize and view the property, so I used my ways to get me there. And I just saw like parking lots from what I saw designated as the 1503 and 1507. So am I looking at the right property when I'm viewing that, or what am I seeing exactly?
Yes, that is correct. That's current, like that little strip mall right there. So the parcel to the north, that vacant parcel will be a parking, that'll become a parking area, a parking lot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any discussion from the public?
Ryan Scray, again. I live over there, and so I frequently traveled by there, and the way 390 is getting built up. I don't know if anybody looked during Hurricane Sally, but that whole area just flooded out. So I would just want, you know, to get the city to consider, you know, looking at their order to see if they have adequate stormwater plan in place for that area, because it sits pretty low.
Ms. Harrison?
The development order is sent out for review to an independent engineer, who is Chris Short. Would you be a engineer who is present if the board has any questions for him addressing stormwater?
Are there any questions for Mr. Dubear regarding stormwater? No questions. City Attorney?
No, I was just, and today, we're obviously just doing the land use change. We're not approving the development order during this hearing. That would come later.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Perno.
Excuse me. Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Attender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Now we will move on to our new business. This will be the first reading by title only, ordinance 1114, Small Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment Application, SSA 2106, Mixed Use and Low Density Residential to Public Institutional. City Manager Gainer, would you please read ordinance 1114 by title only?
An ordinance providing for the adoption pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes of a land use change from mixed use and low density residential to public institutional for three parcels totaling an approximate 1.376 acres located on the corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and West Knight Street in the city of Lynn Haven, Bay County, Florida, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing an effective date.
All right, thank you, City Manager Gainer. This is the first reading, and no action is required. This time, we have the quasi-judicial public hearing. This is a quasi, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so that the, we're going to ask the city attorney at this time.
Right, so on this item, it's a quasi-judicial public hearing, like you said, so anybody who's planning to testify will need to swear them in. So that includes anybody in the room who wants to testify on this. If you'll raise your right hand, do you swear and affirm the testimony you're going to give, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. And also, since it's a quasi-judicial hearing, we would need to have the Commission disclose any ex parte communications you've had with the applicant or anybody else.
I've had none.
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 All right, item number 12, Development Order Application, Andrews Commercial Development, parcel number 11573004000, Aberdeen Parkway. Ms. Harrison?
Okay. This is a request for development order approval to construct two warehouse buildings and one medical office with accompanying infrastructure and landscaping improvements on the 3.945-acre vacant parcel located on the south side of Aberdeen Parkway, parcel number 11573004000. The applicant is requesting development order approval for this 3.945-acre vacant property. The property has a future land use map designation as industrial, therefore warehouses are in allowable use. The proposed warehouses will each be 7,623 square feet in size... The proposed warehouses will each be 7,623 square feet in size, and the medical office will be 3,120 square feet in size. The stormwater system will remain private. The site plans have been reviewed and have been found to be in compliance with the City of Lynn Haven Unified Land Development Code, technical standards, and Florida state requirements. This is a request for the development order approval for the construction of two warehouse buildings, a medical office, and supporting infrastructure.
Thank you. Any discussion from the public? No discussion. Is there a motion from the Commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to item number 13. Again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so the city attorney will ask for ex parte communications and then swear in anyone wanting to speak.
Right, and you're obviously still, well, you're still under oath, and I would say 13, 14, and 15 are all related to the Lynn Haven Sports Park. One's the ball field, one's the gymnasium, the other is the facilities and grounds building. So if there's anybody else who wants to testify on that, I can, I can swear you in. Okay? And if not, any ex parte communications, and I think we can have it for, for all three of those, even though we will want separate votes, but you can disclose your ex parte communication for all three.
I've had none.
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 None, other than that we talk about it.
No communication.
Yeah.
Agenda item 13, development order application, City of Lynn Haven Sports Park Phase 1, 2201 Recreation Drive Ball Fields. Ms. Harrison?
This is a request for development order approval to construct new ball fields with accompanying infrastructure, parking, and landscape improvements on the 60-acre city sports complex located at 2201 Recreation Drive, parcel number 11515-010000. The city is requesting development order approval to construct new ball fields along with parking, landscaping, and infrastructure improvements following the sports complex being destroyed by Hurricane Michael in 2018. The site plans have been reviewed and have been found to be in compliance with the City of Lynn Haven Unified Land Development Code, technical standards, and Florida state requirements. This is a request for development order approval for the construction of new ball fields and supporting infrastructure.
Any questions from the Commission? Any commentary from the public? Or any questions? If there are not any, do we have a motion?
City Attorney, did you say we could put all three of these in one?
We could do the disclosure and the swearing in as one. I think we would still want three separate votes, it's three separate development orders.
Okay. A motion to approve item 13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 14, development order application, City of Lynn Haven Sports Park Phase 2, 2201 Recreation Drive Gymnasium. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. This is a request for development order approval to construct a new gymnasium with accompanying infrastructure, parking, and landscaping improvements on the city, on the 60-acre city sports complex located at 2201 Recreation Drive, parcel number 11515-010000. The city is requesting development order approval to construct a new 27,160-square-foot gymnasium along with parking, landscaping, and infrastructure improvements following the sports complex being destroyed by Hurricane Michael in 2018. The site plans have been reviewed and have been found to be in compliance with the City of Lynn Haven Unified Land Development Code, technical standards, and Florida state requirements. This is a request for development order approval for the construction of a new gymnasium and supporting infrastructure.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Nelson?
Item number 15, development order application, City of Lynn Haven Sports Park Phase 3, 2201 Recreation Drive Facilities and Ground Building.
This is a request for development order approval to construct a new facilities and grounds building plus supporting infrastructure improvements on the 60-acre city sports complex located at 2201 Recreation Drive, parcel number 11515-010000. The city is requesting development order approval to construct a new facilities and ground building along with parking, landscaping, and stormwater improvements following the sports complex being destroyed by Hurricane Michael in 2018. The site plans have been reviewed and have been found to be in compliance with the City of Lynn Haven Unified Land Development Code, technical standards, and Florida state requirements. This is a request for development order approval for the construction of a new facilities building and supporting infrastructure.
Thank you. Questions from the Commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments from the public? City Manager, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Alright, thank you, Ms. Harrison. Agenda item number 16, discussion and possible approval of dedicating New York Avenue from Ninth to Tenth Street as Willie Mae Stanley Block to be placed under the official street name. City Manager, would you please address this item?
Yes. Recently, Ms. Stanley passed away, and I got a really very kind email from a former employee, and I hope she doesn't mind me mentioning her name, Charlie Messer, along with so many other people who knew that she was a great worker here at the city of Lynn Haven. She was a crossing guard for over 30 years. She knew each kid's name. She would carry, she knew whether or not they had a lunchbox for that day. She knew whether or not they had the same clothes on or they needed clothes. She was so attentive to our, our children as they went off to school. She was also the city supervisor elections before we gave it over to the supervisor elections office, a very dedicated employee that really loved the city and loved the children of the city. I do have Mr. Cannon here and some staff that surely can speak to Ms. Stanley being a great employee, and so I'd just like for him to come up and, and speak on.
Thanks. Is this, no, this is 13. John Cannon, principal at Lynn Haven School right now, well, right now. I'm planning on staying for the, for the last, for the last three years, and I can tell you that they called her Dottie, right? They called her Dottie? Is that right? Yes. Her influence is still ringing around the school. She's, you know, been retired for a few years, and the employees still talk about her. I, I can't think of a more fitting tribute than to name that street unofficially after her, so people will continue to ask questions and hear stories about her into the future. I think this is a really appropriate tribute.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept.
A second.
I think Commissioner Warwick got his in first. Alright, so we have a motion, second. Any discussion from the public? Yes, sir.
I'm across the street neighbor. I just wondered.
Can you, can you give me your name and address, please? Come to the mic.
I'm across the street neighbor, David Wagner. Can her name, Dottie, be put on the sign as well? Dottie Willie Mae Stanley.
Yes, we'll do that in-house, and Public Works will actually do a very nice sign there, and it'll be placed under, so we can surely do that.
She was a great neighbor.
Yes.
Any additional comments from the public? City Manager Gainer, if you'll call the vote.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Moving on to item 17, approval of resolution 2021-06357, establishing a charter review committee. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, at the last meeting on May 25th, the Commission authorized staff to prepare a resolution establishing a charter review advisory committee. So Resolution 21-06357 establishes that committee, provides for membership, sets forth rules and bylaws and guidelines for the conduct of the committee meetings. The committee, it's set to meet at least once monthly through June 8th, 2022, unless its final reports or recommendations are completed sooner. That way, once their recommendations are done, the City Commission will have the remainder of 2022 to act on it if they so choose, which would involve having to do an ordinance and getting it to the supervisor of elections before February of 2023, so, was needed.
Before any motion?
We'll need to read it by title.
Okay. Is it going to be City Manager? Yes.
Yes. Resolution number 2021-06357, a resolution of the City of Lynn Haven, Florida, establishing the City of Lynn Haven Charter Review Advisory Committee, providing for membership and terms, providing for meetings of the advisory committee, providing for vacancies, providing for officers, providing for duties of the committee, providing for staff assistance, providing an effective date, and providing for dissolution of the committee.
Thank you, City Manager. I do know the charter and community input was an issue prior to this commission, and so we thought it would be fitting to establish this committee so that we could have citizens' input. And let me also say, though it says it was staff-coordinated, as mayor, I did have several meetings with the City Manager as well as the City Attorney to discuss even the development of this committee. So I don't want us to think it was just the staff that developed this resolution and the bylaws for the committee. There was also input from myself and the City Attorney as well. At this time, is there a motion for this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? No discussion. City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to item number 18, approval of resolution 2021-06358, establishing a, an ad hoc debt review committee. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, the last meeting, May 25th, staff was directed to prepare a resolution establishing a ad hoc debt review committee. This resolution will establish that committee, provide for membership, and set forth rules and guidelines for the conduct of the committee meetings. The committee shall meet at least twice monthly through September 6th, 2022. Final reports or recommendations of the committee will then be presented to the City Commission on or before October 12th of, I'm sorry, that was 2021, on or before October 12th of 2021.
Thank you, City Manager. Again, would you please read the resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City of Lynn Haven, establishing the City of Lynn Haven Debt Review Committee, providing for membership and terms, providing for meetings of the committee, providing for vacancies, providing for officers, providing for duties of the committee, providing for staff assistance, providing for an effective date, and providing for dissolution of the committee.
Thank you. Again, I would just like to comment, just as with the previous resolution, I did have, as mayor, input on the development of this resolution. So I have met with the City Manager several times, as well as several discussions with the City Attorney on the development of this ad hoc committee as well. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the public? City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to item 19, approval of recommended appointees, George Hines Nelson, Lynda Mishler, Aldrich, Lynda Mings, Tender, Jim Friskorn, Perno, Joanne Cox, Warwick, by the Commission to the Charter Committee. So these are actually the individuals when we determined last meeting to establish a Charter Review Committee. We voted on that each commissioner would bring back a name to our commission, and so these are the names that have been recommended by our commission to serve on the Charter Review Committee. One of the things I do see within this list, which I think is a positive, is that there is diversity ethnically as well as gender, and so I think this is a good diverse list to bring thoughts from our various parts in our community here of Lynn Haven. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? No discussion. City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Was that Perno or Aldrich's motion?
Perno.
Perno.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Item number 20, approval of recommended appointees, Joey Ginn Nelson, Frank Hall Aldrich, Twala Miller Tender, Alan McCambray Perno, Ryan Gray Warwick, by the Commission to the debt review, to the ad hoc debt review committee. Again, as we established this committee on the last, during the last commission meeting, we were all asked to bring back a name to recommend to the Commission to serve on this ad hoc debt review committee. Are there any, is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion from the public? City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Item number 21, discussion and possible approval of street closures, Florida Avenue between Eighth and Tenth Streets for a neighborhood block party special event. City Manager, would you please address this item?
Yes. The, Mr. Scray has advised us that they would like to apply for the city to close streets between Eighth Avenue and Tenth Avenue on Saturday, August 28th, 2021, from noon to 8:00 PM for the end of the summer block party. This, this block party is not an official City of Lynn Haven event. The necessary liability insurance and additional public safety expenses will be paid by the sponsor of this event.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
I just wanted to make sure I heard you right. What was the closure times? It is from noon till 8:00 PM. Thank you.
City Manager, one question I do have is, I know after a previous community event that we had over Memorial Day weekend that we talked about possibly creating more processes for our permitting, upon, if we approve this today, will this sort of be grandfathered into our old permitting process, or will this event be required to go through the new permitting process?
I'm gonna let legal answer that.
Right, so if we approve this today, it would be grandfathered in. We did get some emails from the chief and City Manager with some examples, and so we're gonna be working on a, a new ordinance to put a real special events permitting. And so we're gonna be working on a, a new ordinance to put a real special events permitting process in place. We don't really have much in our code right now. So that'll come back, but this would not have to go and comply with whatever we do in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the Commission?
I definitely have questions for Mr. Gray when he comes up.
Not at this time, sir. Hold on.
I, I can ask you, but I don't know that y'all know.
We would, we definitely would not know. And also, I do have the HR Director here in terms of insurance, what we found out from our insurance company as well. So we'll want to, to give you that information as well.
All right, Mrs. Gray?
Okay, normally people that are part of the item get to answer any questions the Commissioners have, so.
Sir, according to our policies, you can't come address until you're acknowledged by the Chair.
Okay, so am I allowed to answer any questions or not?
Yes, you've been acknowledged, yes.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions?
Is this, is this gonna be a, an event for a nonprofit organization?
So I, I actually don't have a nonprofit organization myself. Originally, this came up because I spoke with a member of the Lynn Haven Heritage Society, and they shared with me all the information of these past events and expressed to me that they would like to see this happen again. And I decided that I would take that, you know, community duty upon myself and do it. In order to keep it very transparent, I've set up an LLC called Keep It Lynn Haven LLC. I am the proprietor of that. If this event is approved, I'll be setting up an account for that LLC at Tyndall Federal Credit Union. That way, all the financials will be there through the business. I'm not actually charging anything for services to set this up or coordinate this and not taking any profit from it. It'll all stay in that LLC. If any of the Commissioners or members of the public at any point in time want to question that, whether the events, you know, before it takes place or after, I'd be happy to sit down and share information with them. I'm solely doing this because I, I believe that the community needs more activities and more fun events and things to do. That's why I wanted to set this up. There's been great response for this from members of the public. There's a lot of sponsors, I'm sure you've seen your packet, that are already verbally committed, including Family One Source, Stanford Insurance, who's going to be sponsoring the security budget. Chief Ramey already said that he'd be willing to have off-duty officers be present. I can work through the city to pay for that. Chief Delonge said the same thing for EMTs. So it's not gonna just be an ad hoc pop-up event. I'm actually putting in a lot of time into making sure this is done, you know, in the best way possible, safely, securely, in the best interest of the community. It's gonna be free to attend. I'm getting schools involved. The North Bay Haven Weightlifting Club, or I think Female Weightlifting Club, is gonna sponsor a kids booth. There's a lot that, that's into this, that's not even listed in that packet. I was requested to provide just one page. So I tried to keep it to one page, but, and as far as any kind of permitting processes, future permitting processes, even if it's approved today, if you share that with me, the requirements of the future ones, I'd be happy to, between now and the event, to make sure that I'm meeting the future processes, even for this event. Because I don't want to try to make this a bad event. I want it to be a great thing that keeps going on. And there's a lot of members of the community that want to help with this, and I've just kind of been telling them to hold off. I want to get it, you know, approved before I collect any kind of funds or have anybody else expend any effort at this point. So, but if anybody has any questions, I have data available that I can answer your questions, so.
I have, I have questions.
Sure.
What dollar volume insurance policy are you going to be purchasing?
So I'm working with Derek Freeman, who owns the Spices Right Food Truck. He's previously done setup events like Thunder Beach. He advised me to get at least a million-dollar umbrella policy, and he gave me two sources that he's used for those events. If this, if the new requirements of the city is to have a higher policy, I would pursue that higher dollar policy.
And are you going to get your roadblocks from the city?
Yeah, that would be my intention, is to utilize city-provided barricades.
And trash cans?
Same.
Porta-potties?
So the porta-potties are, I have a quote through a company called Extreme Pumping. I use the data provided to me by the member of the Heritage Society as far as past attendance, figure of how many porta-potties we would need. And I actually have, in the event plan, two specific spots set up for porta-potties. One centrally located and one at the north end near the kids' zone.
And this is kind of an open-ended question for the City Manager as well. On your insurance, I know I was instrumental in the heritage block party. And the only reason we didn't have the children's blow-up things was because of insurance. Yeah, I think it requires additional insurance, does it not? My question to you.
I'm not real sure, but I do know that you can purchase insurance from them if you decide that you want those.
Right, yeah, and I'm going through a company called Spacewalk Panama City for those kids' inflatables. There'll also be up to four, like carnival-type game stations that'll be built and operated by the high school clubs and organizations that they'll actually benefit financially from those game stations through donations.
So you will be purchasing additional insurance through that blow-up company?
If it's offered through the inflatable company, yes. If it's not, I'll talk with the event insurance to make sure that's incorporated. The last thing I want is for somebody to have a mishap or accident and, you know, not, not to be covered for it.
And I believe I read in your setup there that you would not be selling alcohol?
Correct. This event is not gonna have a specific alcohol sales aspect in any way, shape, or form. There's a lot of liability and licensing that goes with that. So as far as alcohol consumption goes, that'll just be general public law on how people have to follow that, you know?
Are you going to have a board of directors for the funds that are left over, if there are any?
So, so far, I'm projecting that there'll be no funds left over, but I'm happy to look into setting that up and finding some volunteers that want to help do that. I would love to see this become an annual thing, so I'll put in whatever effort I need to to make sure it is.
The only reason I ask that question is because right now you're the only owner, so to speak, or the rep of the LLC. If you should move away or whatever.
Yeah, I would want to-
I think it needs to have a board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I forecast being here long-term, but if something were to happen like that, I would want to transfer that company to somebody else here locally. So yeah, I'll look into that then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for Mr. Gray?
I think Commissioner Perno wanted to know if you're going to lease a Gravitron. He really likes that ride. Is it gonna be?
If Beefo Brady's is willing to sponsor it, absolutely.
Little levity, sorry.
Any questions from the public?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Gray for putting this on line. It's a big event, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, Mayor, I wholeheartedly, you know, want to back a citizen that's willing to put their own time and resources into something for the community. It's, it's selfless. He's not making money on this, and so I would happily make the motion to approve.
And just add to that, with proper insurance, what the city named as an additional-
Right, with proper insurance and all the proper licensing in place.
We have a motion?
Sorry, can I ask one question? When will those new guidelines be in effect and could I get a copy of those?
Right, we just actually got an example from the Chief a couple weeks ago, so we'll have to go through the ordinance process with two readings, so I mean, it'll, it'll-
It'll be one.
It'll, I'm not sure, it'll probably be before this event, if it's at the end of August.
Well, I was just kidding, even if I can get a copy in advance before it's read, that way I can just work towards meeting them?
That's fine. We'll start drafting it and bring it back, hopefully at the next meeting for first reading and, you know, go from there, so at least a month.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
City Manager Gainer, please call the vote.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perno?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to item number twenty-two. Discussion and Possible Approval of Change of Commission Meeting Times. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, sir. So I bring this up for multiple reasons, and before I begin, I, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm not a fan of the Sunshine Law because I, I have some questions here about what happened in past commission meetings. I would like to have done one-on-one with you, but unfortunately, we're not able to do that. But what I wanted to do is go over the past events that happened and kind of discuss it, and I'll try to make it as quick as possible. But back on ten November is when we originally discussed, discussion came up and approval to move all City Commissions to nine a.m. by Commissioner Aldridge. And one of the things he brought up was safety, safety, safety. He was concerned about the darkness and lighting issue, and we were in the modular buildings at that time. And he was more than open to keeping the meetings at six p.m. when we get our facilities, lights, and parking lot. And Commissioner Perno had said he received a lot of feedback and Messenger and emails on the importance of evening meeting for working people, and the motion ended up dying. And Compromise was later made that meeting to have a five p.m. until the end of daylight savings time. So after daylight savings time on twenty-three March is when it was discussed again to resume normal time of the second commission meeting of each month at the end of daylight savings time. Aldridge had spoke up, said that he knows that this was a, the public were passionate about the meeting times and how we are one of the only municipalities that has a meeting in the evening. And so I passed these out, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but I went through every single municipality in Florida. And four hundred fourteen municipalities, eighty-nine percent of them have at least one meeting on or after five p.m. Not all municipalities hold two meetings, but the ones that did hold the second meeting, eighty-two percent of them held them at or after five p.m. So we're far from being one of the only municipalities from only having one meeting in the evening. What's that?
I was referring to local municipalities.
Oh, and the Panhandle?
When I made that comment. Well, just Bay County.
Oh, Panhandle?
And surrounding.
So I looked at Panhandle too, and Panhandle, it's actually even higher. Ninety-two percent of them have meeting, have at least one meeting at or after five p.m., and overall, it's like eighty-seven percent.
No, I, I'll repeat myself. I said Bay County and surrounding. The municipalities within Bay County and the county is what-
So just Bay County?
Yes, I was referring to our neighbors, everyone else in the area.
So-
Not, not the state.
Right. But if you look at Bay County, yeah, there are some that have morning meetings, like I know Mexico Beach has morning meetings. But is it Panama City, I think, has one morning meeting, one evening meeting?
All morning.
All morning. Panama City's all morning.
Oh, it's Panama City Beach has one morning and one evening meeting, you know? I think Parker's both are, yeah, Parker's got both of them evening. So there are other municipalities that have them in the, in the evening. So I guess the point I'm making is we aren't the only ones to have evening meetings.
Point taken.
The other thing I, I know you brought up was you talked about the importance of compromise and made a motion to have the meeting at four. And I didn't quite understand how this is a compromise because this took the working people out of the equation to come to any, either one of the meetings. And, and if this is truly what we wanted, why didn't we do that back at the November meeting? And I think, I think part of the struggle that we had before is, I think we're trying to accommodate the city before the residents. I think what we need to keep in mind is the commission meeting is a residence meeting, just like the U.S. Constitution, just like our charter. It's for the people, by the people, of the people. And, and in saying that, this doesn't mean I don't appreciate what the city employees do. I know they're hard-working, talented people, but in the end, this is the residence meeting. And the other thing you brought up was about the after-work crowd being possibly imaginary crowd because we don't have an influx of members, numbers at the event meeting. I personally think that's the wrong way of looking at it. I think we should be asking ourselves, why don't we have more people at the meetings? Because it's important, if we're gonna, we want community involvement, we need to try to get as many people to these meetings as possible. And so my goal, like I said earlier, is have this many people at every single meeting, and I hope that happens in the future. And I know the Mayor brought up at the first meeting how you want to start these committees, which I thought was a great idea, and you had each one of us bring a name, which I also thought was a great idea because I don't know if you'd have enough volunteers for them unless we had brought you a, a name. And so I have ideas for other committees, and some of you may have ideas also. But in order to have those committees and have good qualified people, we need a lot more people actively involved. And that's why I think this meeting, having, getting this meeting time right is really, really important. And so I can tell you, I did a lot of camp, door-to-door campaigning, and I added all up and I got all, I have all my books here of when I went door-to-door, everybody I marked off. And I, and I spoke, spoke to, not knocked on the door, actually physically spoke to two thousand five hundred forty-three households. And so, you know, there might be multiple people in those households. And, and it's almost about fifty percent of registered voters when you add it all up. And that doesn't include like forums and meet and greets and people that called me and emailed me and all that. And so, so I believe in order to, this is a key piece in order to get more people involved in the community. There's multiple pieces to it, but I think this is an important piece to get this meeting time right. And I've received a lot of feedback from going door-to-door and people emailing me, and people are, are, are demanding that we have an evening meeting. And we have to have evening meeting to accommodate the working class. Now, I did receive a couple emails a couple days ago about having the meetings in the morning time. And I know we can't accommodate everybody. I would like to accommodate everybody. But we have to try to accommodate as many residents as possible, again, because this is their meeting. So, so I wanted to kind of open it up for discussion. Like I said, I didn't want to do it this way. I'd rather sit down one-on-one with you, but you know, we can't do that and, and go from there.
Yeah, let, let me respond for just a moment because, again, I don't take, I don't take any of it personally. We're here to do the job, so I can definitely speak to it. First off, let me make the comment that I do not sit at my office every day trying to make money and scheme about how I can anger people. I don't sit there and have a whiteboard and draw out plans and figure out how I can disrupt the city or disrupt the citizens. I think it all boils down to our own individual spheres of influence and the people that we talk with on a daily and weekly basis. We all have different spheres, different friends, different people in the community. We live in different neighborhoods. My sphere of influence is mostly dictated by my eleven-and-seven-year-old daughters. In other words, I'm at dance school. I'm seeing moms and I, you know, I, I, with the seniors and talking with them at the senior center. And I've received emails too from both sides the last three or four days, I would say. Some are from wanting to change the meeting, some are wanting to keep the meetings the same. But from, from the people that I speak to in my sphere that I represent, they all, they all want to cook dinner at six. They all want to, they all want to cook dinner at six, if I'm putting that correctly. They want to put children in baths at six, or they're picking up their kids from dance or baseball or football at six. And so I understand there's demographics that like the, the five and six o'clock meetings because it suits their schedule. But we always have to keep in mind as citizens, all of us are citizens, that there are other demographics as well that disagree with that premise. So, and, and all fairness, and I feel like that's what I'm trying to be, is fair. You know, it's, it's a morning meeting and an afternoon meeting. You know, it's, it's at the pleasure of the Board. I've said it before, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm one vote. I'm not a dictator. I'm not, you know, trying to do anything intentionally to anger anyone. I talk to the people that I talk to, and they inform me. I know a lot of the seniors don't like it because they don't want even the thought of driving after dark. And I've heard people make the comment, well, then they can come to the morning one. Well, I mean, that's kind of, you know, I, I don't like the way that's, that's presented. You can go find another place, but I want what I want. So again, I'm one vote. We'll see what happens with, with the rest of the Commission or, or what everybody decides and go from there. Either way, I'll be here at the meetings.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak? I too have received a lot of emails in the last week, but I received them the last time we discussed the hours of meetings. I, I've even gotten emails from people, they want to meet at five-thirty twice a month and not have the daytime meeting. In fairness to all residents and all citizens, to me, it seems fair to split it up and do one nighttime and at five-thirty. I think our meetings all used to be at six o'clock when I was first elected. We didn't, we never had daytime meetings. But, and they were attended very well over at the church or whatever they used to call it, I don't know. or whatever they used to call it, I don't know, but at the very least, I would think to be fair to everyone, we should consider having one morning meeting and one nighttime meeting.
If I can, so your big concern, well, the big concern shouldn't be you, the senior citizens, is the daylight time and the darkness, is that the big concern for them?
Well, that's what they brought to me, yes, yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And you can go talk to the seniors at the senior center.
Yeah, I've been there.
They're here three, four days a week, playing cards and having fun, so.
So...
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
I've said this before, I'm good either way, I don't, I don't learn much by hearing myself talk, so I'm here to listen, I've heard, I've seen the emails, I'm about, I'm probably about sixty, forty on the emails, but most people are okay with a split. You know, when we, when we voted for four, I'm like, okay, let's try it. You're gonna put it out there, I'm gonna vote for whatever, whatever it is, I'm gonna be here no matter what. So we've only had two meetings at four o'clock, and they've been well-attended, you know, so, but, you know, if you want to have one at five and one at nine, man, I'm okay, I'm gonna be here, you know? So it's a service thing for me, it's for the citizens.
Right.
So y'all hash it out all you want, I'm just gonna sit here and vote when it's time to vote.
Yeah, that's exactly what I want to do, is try to find that proper balance, and that's why I asked the question, if it's the daylight hours, that's a big concern for the seniors, and if that's the case, I would like to, this is the motion I would like to propose, is one meeting at four PM and one meeting at five-thirty PM, and that's the motion I would like to make.
Is motion on the floor?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion from the public? Mr. Miller?
Leon Miller, fifteen oh eight Mississippi Avenue, going back to Mayor Perry days, Mayor Perry had meetings at seven o'clock, didn't too many citizens show up. We have to take this in consideration of a lot of the parents and grandparents have kids playing football, basketball in the afternoon, and you're gonna take them away from the games where they need to see the grandkids and the kids play. We're not never gonna set a time to suit everybody. In your survey, when you were done your survey, I remember you passed my house and then stopped and knocked. Thank you.
Sorry if I respond to that?
Commissioner Warwick?
I'm sorry if I didn't make it to your house, I tried to make it to every single house, and I apologize, and I've been more than happy to talk to you, and I'd still be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting, so it was nothing personal.
Jody Moore, twenty-one, twenty-nine Amherst Street, I think it's been illustrated that there's no time that is good for everyone here. Nine o'clock, I know for me, I have arthritis, so it's hard for me to get out of bed in the morning, and I know that a lot of older people, older than I am, probably have a hard time getting up in the morning, okay? So you're talking about grandparents, you're talking about parents that are trying to get their kids off to school at nine o'clock in the morning when a meeting is being held. Parents are trying to get off to work, okay? So there is no perfect time. I personally would be okay with what we had before, a nine o'clock meeting and a five o'clock meeting. I think it's great to have a four o'clock meeting and five-thirty, I'm totally okay with that. I think it's wrong to have all nine o'clock meetings because we need compromise, so everybody can attend and everybody can participate. When we had the Mill Bayou issue, which is gonna be ongoing, there were numerous people who stood up here and were just now paying attention because it affected them, and they commented, they said, why, I'm just now finding out about this, why are all the meetings, why haven't I been able to come to meetings? I need to be able to come to meetings, I can't get off work. There were new, I sat and watched numerous people talk about that, so this has been an issue. I just think we need compromise here, it's not about, all about senior citizens, it's not all about working people, it's not all about people with families, we need, all the community needs to have an opportunity to come. And I also wanted to address something really quickly since commentary was moved up to an earlier time regarding Chief Ramy. Mr. Obos keeps referring to First Amendment and talking about the Facebook page. He continues to ignore the WNBB TV report, which came up, okay? So you keep glossing over that as far as First Amendment goes. Most companies have employee policy, and they say that you have to represent your company, the city, whatever entity you work for, you have to represent that entity appropriately, okay? So you know what, if we're not going to follow the employee policy, or you aren't going to, I think just rip it up and take it out of the employee handbook, that's just my opinion on that. But anyway, like I said, regarding, I love what your proposal is, but like I said, I think the nine o'clock and the five o'clock was okay, I never liked the nine o'clock and the four o'clock because that took out the people who would want to come to meetings after work. It's not fair to expect people to have to take off work for that, that's just my two cents on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Skrgan, Commissioner Warwick, we agree on a lot, this is one thing that I, you might be surprised by this, but I don't agree with you on this, I would urge you to amend your motion to be a nine o'clock and a five-thirty meeting, for the reasons that I will now state. You know, we've talked about how we have division, divided meetings, I emailed all of the commissioners and the mayor about having two separate meetings, I do think you're addressing both sides of the public, I appreciate what Leon said about, you know, having an evening meeting or not having an evening meeting, but I think we need to have at least one. I mean, I'm on an adult kickball league here, sponsored, you know, put on by the Lynnhaven, City of Lynnhaven, and I'm gonna miss these evening meetings through the summer, because if they're on Tuesdays and they're in the evening, I'll be playing kickball on Tuesdays. I'm okay with that, that happens, I'll review the video later. You know, I take off work to come to these nine o'clock meetings, I'll probably be working until midnight or one o'clock this morning to make up for the time I spent here this morning, but I do think it's important that we have two meetings at two separate times, not four and five-thirty, not five and five-thirty, but nine o'clock and five-thirty, or nine o'clock and five o'clock, because it gives the public opportunity to attend, you know, whatever they can attend. I think the real issue here is not what time it is, it's when important stuff is on the agenda, can they attend that meeting? You know, the Mill Bayou meeting being at nine o'clock caused problems, especially when we have a workshop, and then the next day at the meeting, the workshop wasn't a quasi-judicial hearing, so the attorney has no choice but to say, you can't base your decision on what went on in that workshop. So then the commission has to ignore everything they heard the night before and base it only on what they hear during that hearing. So it's not really, is it a nine o'clock, or is it a five o'clock, or a five-thirty, it's what's on the agenda and can I attend for that agenda? I think that's what we need to think about here, so nine o'clock, five-thirty, or nine o'clock, five o'clock, I'd appreciate it if you amend it, I think it'll pass if you do.
Mr. Hines?
George Hines, sixteen oh three Rollout Avenue, the meeting so far has been two hours. If we start at six o'clock meeting, people gonna get out here at eight o'clock at night, if we have an agenda as heavy as the one we had tonight, or we have as many people talking as we have tonight. My question for Mr. Jamie is, the nine o'clock meeting, if it's a problem because of your employer, then you might need to look at that for yourself, not everybody else. Some of us get up at five o'clock in the morning, that's older than the young lady that says she can't get up at five, I don't know why, I do it every day. If you have a nine o'clock meeting, we can make it. If you have a four o'clock meeting, a six o'clock meeting in the afternoon, we can make it, but everybody is not gonna fit any time. You gotta think about the time you spend in the meeting, along with the time you prepare for your meeting. So if we have a meeting and last two hours like tonight, you'll be home at eight o'clock tonight, or nine o'clock that by the time some of these people drive to their house, because that'll make stops on the way to and fro. You need to take that into consideration, one in the morning, one in the afternoon.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Hendricks, I live at three four oh seven Cherry Ridge Road in Lynnhaven. I am a senior.
If you pull your mic down for us.
I am a senior. My concern is, most seniors have eye vision problems, we cannot drive at night, it's blinding. If you have a meeting that starts at six PM and gets out at eight, nine, or ten PM, if there's several discussions, are you going to drive us home? I personally will not drive down the street after dark. In the winter months, dark is at seven. Please keep it at four, at least at six, I can get home when it's still light, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry you...
I'm sorry, I just want to speak again.
I'm sorry, you've already, you've already, you've already made your comments. You've already had your comments.
I know, I just want to speak to this lady.
I'm sorry.
I have three other seats in my car, I'll drive you home, if you need a ride, I will. Six o'clock was not the proposal.
Make it quick, I'm not gonna wait till darkness comes.
One second, sir.
Rich Walker, eleven oh six Michigan Avenue.
Hold on, one second. Please keep in mind that after you make your comments once, please do not, you are not able to return to make additional comments, no, you're okay, but after you make these comments once on a discussion item, you're not at liberty to come back and make additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Quick, before it gets dark, what happens to the evenings when we are forced by state law to be here after five oh one? What happens on the days when we are told by municipal law that we can't meet on those days? We crank those into the situation. My point is this, why is there a law that says we have to be here at five oh one? There's a reason for that, because people have to get off work. That one minute allows them to leave their workplace to get here. So if there's a state law that says we have to have meetings at five oh one, there's a reason. Why don't we have the same reason for us?
Thank you.
Jerry Parker, Red Place, personally, I would like both meetings to be in the evening, however, the imperative word here is compromise. We have to compromise to accommodate as much people as possible. If the seniors are afraid of the nine AM, fine, I mean, of the six PM, fine, let's do it at five-thirty, let's have a nine, that is compromise, that affords both sides the ability to make it here, we have to compromise. If you constantly do it at nine AM, you are cutting out a huge population of this city, and I think that's wrong. We have to compromise. And in reference to the ethics clause, I just want to say something with that. If you're gonna have an ethics clause in your...
This discussion is about meeting times, not the, there was already a time for public comment, and I'll, you know, let the mayor handle that.
But do I not have additional time? Can I just talk, not talk about that? I can't talk about the other thing?
Right, that was for, that was for public commentary as it relates to the ethics issue.
It wasn't brought up before that, when, that was, before that even came up, we had public commentary.
Correct, that should have been addressed during public commentary if there were any issues regarding ethics for Chief Ramy.
Okay, it'll be the next meeting, thank you.
Mayor?
Glenda Butler, four one five Montana Avenue, I am retired, I am a volunteer, I cannot make most of the meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, so if any of the seniors need a ride, I do transportation, I do Meals on Wheels, I do covenant care, I can help you in any way that you need, but I have to have an evening meeting, otherwise I can't make it. And today was an exception, I had somebody they had to cancel, so, but we need an evening meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Attender?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to propose that Commissioner Warwick amend his motion to, instead of five-thirty and five, or whatever it was initially, that he make a motion for a nine AM and a five-thirty meeting.
Guess the crowd has it.
Well, let me just, if I may, Mayor, a couple issues, one, we do need to change meeting, if we're going to change meeting times, it needs to be done by resolution, we can make that, make that part of the motion, obviously, I would say, as far as, we would want some clarifications as far as the effective date of this, I know there's some ordinances that we had first reading on, I think there was the noise ordinance last time, so there may already be ads in place for the four o'clock meeting, so if we do change it for two weeks from now, we might have to re-advertise and notify the News Herald, and same thing with any ads that were prepared for tonight, so if you, if you're going to amend your motion, if you would address the effective date, and what I would actually recommend is the motion to direct staff to bring a resolution back, and I hate to hash this all out one more time, but that way it would give us time to actually put a resolution on the agenda and have it voted on with an effective date, instead of just changing it, you know, by motion only, we do need a resolution for that. Thank you.
The reason I, I mean, no matter what, what motion we put out there, it's not gonna make everyone happy, I'm sorry, I know I'm supposed to stress you, I know it's not gonna make everyone happy, and so that's why I'm trying to do, is find that proper balance where it's gonna accommodate as many people as possible, that's why I brought up the four o'clock thing, because I thought the main concern was daylight hours, and if we had a meeting at four o'clock, I would think we'd be out of here by the time it starts getting dark. So that's kind of why I made the four o'clock and the six, or five-thirty, because that way it would try to accommodate both sides of working people and the senior citizens, unless I'm wrong, I'm always open, so.
Any other discussion from the commission?
If I understand the motion correctly, you're wanting to do away with the nine AM altogether, is that correct?
I wanted one at four and one at five-thirty was my motion.
See, manage again if you call the vote.
Before we vote, you wouldn't amend your, you wouldn't amend your motion to one at nine AM and one at five PM or five-thirty?
I mean, I can, I'm just, I'm just saying, if I, I made the motion for four.
If you want the damn thing to pass, I would amend the motion.
So let me ask you this, if, do you think, and maybe we can hear the public on this, do you think it would make a difference for someone whether you have one at nine or four o'clock?
I think we'd make everybody happy if we had one at nine and one at five. One at nine and one at five, and go from there. It was at five before, five and nine would be a compromise to five-thirty, it'd be closer to daylight, you probably can make a late game, if we did one at nine and one at five, I think it would carry.
Again, my question is, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
Again, let's try it, we tried six, we tried four.
I don't want to try some, I want, I want whatever it's gonna be, and whether it's nine and four, or five-thirty, or whatever it is, we need to make something that's gonna be semi-permanent, nothing's permanent in this world, but I don't want to constantly change times over and over again. We need to set a, find a time that's a happy meeting, medium that accommodates as many people as possible, and that's what I'm trying to do, that's why I'm asking the question, if you do a meeting at four o'clock, is that gonna take away the nine o'clock morning crowd? That's my question, and I don't know the answer to that, that's why I'm asking, but based on the information, I've been getting a lot of people, a lot of people have been screaming about the evening meetings, but I don't want to exclude the seniors that, because of daylight time, that's why I thought the four o'clock in the afternoon would be a good one also, because people that do work, there'd be a better chance for them to make it, unless they have to work till five, but that's why I brought it up like that.
Let's just do one in the morning and one in, one in the evening. Go ahead and amend your motion for one in the morning, one in the evening, you can't have them both in the afternoon, it looks like, because I would rather make everybody one morning, one evening, how about that?
Mr. Warwick, you know, again, it's never been anything other than trying to do what I feel like my constituents want, same, same as you. But politics is about compromise, number one rule, okay? We tried the four, the five, and the six, and I think all of us, most of us that's in this room, or at least on this board, has been at all those times, and I, you know, I don't see a major fluctuation in attendance regardless of whether it's four or five.
four or five. That being said, if you want to amend the motion to make it nine and five, I'll get behind you on that, and we can squash this thing and be done with it and move forward. If not, then, you know, I've spoken my piece on it, so.
Commissioner Tender?
Thank you. I like either one of those times, but my common sense is telling me that nine and 5:30. And the reason I say 5:30, to answer your question, is many people get out of work at five. I know you just made a comment. It's okay. I know, I know.
I'll make it one in the morning, one in the evening.
Gotcha. And I just think 5:30 makes more sense than five, because a lot of people work till five o'clock, and they can't race over here, you know what I'm saying? And they'll miss part of the meeting if we make it at five. I personally am for nine and 5:30, but I wanted to say to Commissioner Warwick, if you want to leave it at what you've got, then take a vote and see where it lands you, and then it will have to come back up for voting again.
While we're talking, I like what Mr. Miller said, because the earlier, it's still evening, four, five. If you have it at five, and your kids are playing ball, you might be able to make a game, so.
Thank you.
Say that again, I missed that part, that you have it-
If you have it at, if you have it at five, if you have it at four, absolutely, you can make your kids' game at 5:30 or six, because a lot of times the games are in the evening, you know? But, you know, it is what it is, so let's-
I guess that's what I was getting at earlier. You're never going to have a happy time for everyone. So, all right, so, all right. So I'll make, I'll amend my motion, one nine in the morning and the other one at 5:30 in the evening.
Can you include an effective date or to really authorize? We, again, we need to do this by resolution. You can authorize, as part of your motion, us to prepare a resolution to actually be approved and signed, like we did the last one. But we would want to know the, when do we want to start this? Again, I say that because I know we've got some ordinances that are in the middle of advertising. We may have to re-advertise them and spend a couple more hundred dollars with the News Herald.
But, so with that being said, what would you recommend with all those re-advertisings going on?
I wouldn't want to spend another six or $700 to re-advertise it. What I would recommend, if you're going to amend the motion to, you're saying nine and 5:30, and authorize the mayor, you know, we would prepare the resolution, authorize the mayor to sign a resolution, changing the meeting times to nine and 5:30, beginning with the July, beginning July 1st, you know, so whenever those two meetings are.
So I amend my motion, one meeting at nine in the morning, one meeting at 5:30, starting in July.
And authorize the mayor to sign a resolution prepared by staff.
And I authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Right, okay. Thank you. Mayor, if we, just to clarify, if we voted no, going along with some of the people that got up and spoke, it just stays nine and four, correct? So we have an amended motion?
We have amended motion. Is there a second for that?
Sure, second.
All right, do we need any further discussion on this? City manager, please call the vote.
Oh, wait, we've got one more back here.
Is there another comment?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to see the nine and 5:30 meeting times. I have never personally had a job where I was allowed to leave, to go to commission meetings or to anything else, even for doctor's meeting, you know, for a doctor's appointment. My bosses were not thrilled about me having, about scheduling even doctor visits during working time. That's for your off time. And so I, while it's been expressed here that, that, oh, if they really wanted to, they could get here at nine o'clock in the morning, well, that is not true for your average working people, which, who I would like to see more of them here in the meetings. They're not, nine to five is a normal working hours. And so I would vote for the nine and 5:30 times.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Can I just say one last thing? I really hope that this works for as many people as possible, and a lot of you come back to these meetings. I really like that we got a lot of people here, and I hope that continues to happen. And I hope that this is a semi-permanent solution. Only reason I say semi-permanent, because there's nothing permanent in this world, so I hope, I hope this works the best for the resident. That's my goal in this whole thing. Thank you.
City manager?
Commissioner Warwick?
Yes.
Commissioner Tender?
Yes.
Commissioner Aldrich?
No.
Commissioner Parno? Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed. This means adjourned.